Just a reminder to council when I read your name and roll call, please indicate your physical location. Councilmember Wilcox.
Present, City of Ypsilanti, Washington County.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Present, City of Ypsilanti, Washington County.
Councilmember Somerville.
Present, City of Ypsilanti, Washington County.
Mayor Richardson.
Present, City of Ypsilanti, Washington County.
Councilmember Morgan. Councilmember Simmons. Mr. Jones Chance.
Present, City of Ypsilanti, County of Washington.
Just speak with Councilmember Morgan, he is going to be joining shortly. And present there is a quorum.
All right, thank you. Would someone also move to excuse Councilmember Simmons?
All right, so move to excuse Jennifer Simmons until she gets here.
And, and Morgan too.
And Morgan.
Yes. It's been moved in second to, to excuse all in favor.
Aye.
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 All right, thank you. The motion carries. All right, Mr. Halinga, if you would carry us on with the meeting. Thank you.
Council, next item on the agenda is agenda approval. Councilmember Morgan is now present. Hooray! The next item is agenda approval.
Andrew, I have a quick question. Should, if I wanted to add something to the agenda, should I do that now or after somebody supports the motion?
There needs to be a motion and a second on the agenda approval and then amendments can be made.
Okay, thank you.
I move to approve the agenda.
It's been moved and supported for the agenda. Councilmember Somerville.
Um, yeah, I moved to add an agenda item to reconsider Resolution 2021-105E.
That's seconded.
Okay, could you help me know what that one is?
Yeah, that was the resolution that amended our fiscal year budget to increase the number of police officers to our IPD.
All right, it's been moved in second, so that should be added to the agenda. Thank you. Any other?
Roll call.
Pardon?
Needs to be a vote to amend the agenda.
Oh, okay. Well, before there are, on just one, or do we get all the, we want vote on adjustments one by one? Is that what you're saying?
Are there any other amendments to the agenda?
Okay, that's what I was asking, if there were any other amendments to the agenda. Okay, if not, let's move on, amending the agenda. As a two votes, is that what you're saying?
Yep.
Okay.
One amended and one to approve.
All right, all in favor of amending the agenda?
Aye.
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 Okay, all right, there's four to amend the agenda. Oppose?
No.
No.
All right, Mr. Halinga.
The agenda was amended, now you have to vote on the agenda as amended.
Okay, I just wanted to hear that, the vote on the amendment. So, the, all in favor of the amend, of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Council, next item on the agenda is public comments. There are 25 members in the attendees list. You'll have three minutes to address. I will call on you as, in order of the hands raised. First member of the attendance list with their hand raised was Brian Garinger. I'll allow them to speak now. Mr. Garinger, you have three minutes to address council.
Thank you, Mr. Halinga. Hi, council and everyone else. I am here on the amendment that is now going to be discussed today, and I gotta say, I'm very happy to hear that it will be discussed. This is clearly a perfect opportunity for you all to go back on that decision, which actually, there's been a lot of discussion about, and recently, I was the author of a article about that move for What's Left Ypsilanti. If anyone's interested in seeing that, you can go to what'sleftipsilanti.com, and it is the first article listed there. And what we found, I worked with Flo Key Ivy, and what we found is that there is no evidence that adding police in Ypsilanti over the last decade has caused any decrease in crime. That doesn't seem to be a correlation. And so, I, now that you have the opportunity, I urge you all to look towards the progressive cities around the country that are using money to do proactive things for the community that can come in the way of somebody getting involved in the criminal justice system in, you know, which we know is largely licensing, back unemployed residents. So I'm very excited that this is coming back up. And I just, I hope you think about what you want your legacy to be and who you're talking to, and you know, Ypsilanti is 70% renters, so 70% of the people you're talking to as a council member are not renters, then you're getting a homeowner biased opinion. homeowners are more likely to want more police, and that's not how I think a lot of people in the city feel. I think the majority of people don't feel like that. Appreciate you all, well, some of you, and I'm excited to hear what you.
Thank you, Mr. Garinger. Next.
Council, next individual with their hand raised is John E. Lawrence. I'll allow them to speak now.
Thank you.
Mr. Lawrence, you have three minutes to address council. You have to unmute yourself.
All right, thank you. Well, thank you, council, for allowing me to speak. I would have come to you sooner, but I was under the gun to get this Frog Island Jazz Series started, and I had three weeks to make it happen, and so I just put it into action. But now I'm coming to you, asking for your sponsorship, asking for you to help out with the series. It's, for those of you who don't know, anybody who don't know about the series, that I need to explain anything? Okay, good. The series is drawing numbers rapidly. The first concert we had on July 2nd pulled around between 700 and 800 people. The, the last, when we did last week had over 1,600 people there, and this one, this week is we expecting to go even further, you know? As the word gets around, it's growing. But I set out to do this as my way of giving back to the community, but it ended up being a little bit more than I, as far as the cost, more than I budgeted for. But I can handle it. I just need, so I just don't want to have to pay any additional costs. It's sometimes to see if you guys will waive any fees that are associated with putting on the concert series. And if you'd like to sponsor and donate some, some money, that would be helpful as well.
Mr. Lawrence, this is not a time that council talks back to you. It's a time for you to say, to put your whole, time for you to talk to council, and then we will address what you say and address you afterwards.
Okay, this sounds good.
So these are your three minutes.
Okay, also, I can give you an idea of the cost that I'm incurring. This is weekly. The stage is $3,000 a week. We've done this for 10 weeks. The lights are another $650 per week. The performers are paid $1,500 each, each week. The Port of John's started out as just three of them for like $400, but last week we had a long, long lines, and we need to get more. And so we're gonna need at least 10 this week. That, that's gonna cost us probably around $1,500. And this is happening every week. We developed a website, cost about $1,000 to do, then we put together flyers, posters, souvenir booklet banners, and, and lanyards for performers and, and sponsors, and the staff, and that came to about 3,500. That was a one-time cost. We gotta, we gotta pay parking people to help us with the parking at Riverside Park. Make sure nobody gets in that's not supposed to be in, and that's basically it, so.
Three minutes, council.
That's it.
Council, next individual with their hand raised on the attendees list, Dave Stransky. I'll allow them to speak now. You have three minutes to address council.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
This is Dave Stransky from Solar Ypsilanti, and I understand that tonight you're gonna be voting on a memo of understanding with Habitat for Humanities so that we can, they can help us find grant money to install solar on 100 low-income homes. I wanted to give you a little update of where we're at with solar power these days. We just finished a project at Growing Hope on Michigan Avenue. The solar project at the Rutherford Pool is probably 90% done. There's just a little bit more work to do there. And we have funding, and the projects are in place to put solar at Hamilton Crossing, Highscope, Riverside Arts, and Metro, Metropolitan Memorial Baptist Church. Most of this funding, well, all of this funding is coming from outside donors. A lot of it's coming from Solar Moonshot Project. So, so solar continues to happen in our city, but what I want to try and do is get solar on, on, more into the community that probably needs it the most to save their money on, on their electric bills. So, we want to partner with Habitat for Humanities, kind of use their 501(c)(3) status so they can collect grant money, and then work with the city to, we've actually already have identified homes or possible homes to then, you know, bid out a contract and, after we find the money, to, to install solar on these homes. So I just encourage you to vote, vote yes on that memo of understanding with Habitat for Humanities. That's it.
All right, thank you.
Council, next individual with their hand raised is the Tucson. I'll allow them to speak now.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we hear you.
You can hear me.
Yes, Mr. Tucson. Yes, welcome.
Yes, council, I'm, I have some concerns about the, the adding of the police department, I mean, police, the policemen. See, council, we don't need, we don't need to play with the safety of the city and the community by not adding police officers. See, what, what, what we must, we must send a strong message to those who violate in our city. And, and listen to this. It's easier to add police to keep the peace than to let peace get away, and then you want to add police to bring back peace. It, 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 it doesn't work like that. It does not work like that at all, and it hasn't looked like that over the years. We must give policemen every possible tool that they need to work with to, to keep peace in, in, in our city. Because we all need peace. We all want to be safe. We want our community to flourish, and a, 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 a community that's not safe is, is, is not going to flourish. I don't know how close you all been following of what the prosecutor is doing in our county. He's not making it easy for the policeman to do their work at all. He's making it real difficult for policemen to do their jobs efficiently. Because what he does, all he does is take care of the criminals, don't do nothing for the victims. So what does that do? That allows these criminals to come into our city from different cities, different states, and do whatever they want to do because the message is not there. Don't come to Ypsilanti and mess up, because if you do, you're gonna get nabbed. That message is not there with this prosecutor. And we certainly need the weight off our police officers that they can do their job and do it efficiently. So I, I do not play with the safety of the community by arguing about, and I'm talking to everybody on council, arguing about, we don't need it, we don't this, we don't that. You need them. You need police officers. Nobody wants to be in a city where you don't have police officers keeping the peace and keeping folks safe. So let's do the right thing. Promote the Ypsilanti Police Department in every aspect of safety. Give them everything they need to work with to keep us safe. Because you know what? After all, who we gonna call? We can't call Ghostbuster. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucson.
Council, the next individual with their hand up in the attendees list is Brian Foley. I'll allow them to speak now.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Good evening. Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, just making sure. Last Thursday night, guitar player in my band's wife was shot in the arm in the 900 block of Madison Street. She was in a house minding her own business. And what happened was somebody shot up that street, which happens all the time. She's an innocent victim, and she got shot Thursday night. Last night, I witnessed, right behind my house, guy beating the crap out his girlfriend. Sunday night, I actually broke up a fight that occurred. It was in Ypsilanti Township at the New Wave Chicken Place there on Witterboro. This was in Ypsilanti Township. Where it was eight females trashing the gas station, and there was six sheriff deputies there. Unfortunately, I was there to squash them as they were just tearing up the, the gas station. July 4th, I came home to see police and fire on the corner of Hamilton and Harriet Street, lining both sides, where a fight had been going on, and ambulance had to take a couple people away. These are not unusual occurrences. I live on the south side of Ypsilanti. I don't visit here. I've lived here for 62 years. Shootings occur literally, literally, every single night here. I know. I hear the police come down Hamilton Street, and I hear them come down Hawkins, then I hear them turn, obviously, most of the time up in Harriet. I am not a cheerleader for the police department, but I'm not an antagonist now. I'm not a antagonist either. We need protection. As Brother Tucson said earlier, the message is that you can come to Ypsilanti and do any damn thing that you want to do. You can sell drugs, you can shoot freely, houses are shot up frequently. You can speed up and down our streets. You can do anything you want to do because the message isn't there. We need our police department. And as Mr. Tucson said, we need the full support of every one of them. We're not there yet where we can remove the hand of protection around our citizens because our citizens need protection. That's the responsibility of council, to provide security and safety for our community. Not to open it up so it becomes the wild, wild west like it did in the 80s and 90s, when I witnessed it then. So, council members, you better get a backbone and do the right thing. Or you're gonna hear back from your citizens. Trust and believe that. Thank you.
Council, next attendee with their hand up is Jenna. Allow them to speak now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Yes.
Yes, Jenna. Hello, good evening, council. This is my first time attending a meeting and speaking. I'm also here to speak about the budget amendment and addition of police officers to the force. I don't know what the right thing to do is. I'm so glad that you've decided to reopen it for discussion, though. The main thing I want to say is that I felt that it was very rushed before to adopt a sudden budget amendment without proper public comment and without receiving the guidance of the Community Policing Advisory Committee. So the main thing that I want to say is that I look to city council to make sure that this is the best movement to, the, the best way to use our funds to ensure public safety, that it will actually accomplish the goals, and that the citizens that it is meant to help are primarily in favor of it, particularly in neighborhoods where we plan to add more force. Have we done the kind of canvassing to find out if this is the preferred way to spend this money, if we have this money to spend at all? As others have said, if we, and council members have said, if we can't afford the budget, eventually we won't have any police, and things will be even worse than they are. So I urge council to take a measured, evidence-based approach with public input, and take your time, several weeks if you need it, to make a really wise decision about how to use these resources most effectively to achieve the most for public safety for the community. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you very much for speaking.
Council, the next individual with their hand raised is Valerie Brown Tucson. I'll allow them to speak now.
I think they. Um, good evening, everyone. I just want to quickly say, because I'm on another meeting, that I, I support having the additional three police officers. Living on the south side, it's mandatory that we do. We have so many issues going on, and we know that historically, a lot of our people on the south side are not voters. They, you know, they don't always come out to vote, but they are affected by crime and all of the negative that goes along with, with crime in this community. And our police department, as far as I know, and please don't quote me, you can correct me, we are already down by more than 50% of our police officers. And so adding three only allows for our police officers to be able to police Ypsilanti. I know that there are some areas in Ypsilanti that are more affected by crime and its activities than others. And so while one or some may feel that this is not the best way to spend monies, for us on this side of town, it's important that we look into investing in additional police officers to help our existing police officers do the job that we've hired them to do. So I'm asking council to please do the responsible thing in looking at our demographics, understanding how our residents are being affected in the various areas of this community, and make the decision to please grant the additional three police officers to help our existing police officers do the job that we have hired them to do. Thank you guys so very much for all that you do, and I'm asking, please, that you consider the ones that have no voice, who are daily affected by the activities of crime, crime activities, crime. And think about those people, our elders on this side of town, who cannot come to these type meetings and voice their concerns. I speak for all of them and others. Please consider us on the south side of Ypsilanti as part of the residents of Ypsilanti as a whole, and grant us the additional three police officers that we have already budgeted for this coming year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Tucson, Ms. Brown.
Hand raised is Flo.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, my name is Alison Ivy, pronouns they/them, and I am here to talk about the police officers. I did a lot of research after the last meeting. I feel like as a scientist and as a resident of the south side of Ypsilanti, I want to make a very measured approach to how we deal with the crime that's happening in our city. I drop my kids off every day at Perry Elementary School, because we have a great program there, reprogram. There's tons of single moms that are dropping their kids off there all the time. And I would just like to say that if you think the police officers that are in that area are just gonna be moving cars from people from out of town and just be pulling people over from out of town, that's just not realistic. The people that are gonna be getting those tickets, the people that are going to be incurring those fines, the people whose families are gonna be broken up because people are locked up for small things like not paying warrants, basically crimes for being poor, um, those are the people who are gonna be arrested, and those are the people that, um, are gonna be affected by this. Me, my family, my friends. I've talked to all of them. So I reject that there's people just coming in saying that this is what she, what we should do. I, I live here. I care about it. I drop my kids off there every day. I live on the south side. That's one thing. The other thing is, is that through my research, I found that there is zero correlation between the increasing in budget of the Ypsilanti Police Department and the rate of violent crime. Now, we need to make sure that if we are trying to fight crime, that we are fighting in a way that is effective, and that way is not through more cops. If anything, the more money we add to the police department, the higher the crime rate gets. If anything, the more money we add to the police department, the higher the crime rate gets. And I'll tell you why. The reason is, is when you are desperate, you'll do desperate things. I don't think anybody wakes up and says they want to be a criminal. I don't think anyone in our community wants to hurt anyone or wants to wake up and say they want to be a criminal. I don't think that's what's happening, but I do think that people get desperate. And I don't think the way to deal with that desperation when people make poor choices or don't have access to mental health or other things is by locking them up. In multiple other meetings, Brian Jones Chance, Anthony Morgan, you've all stated that you have said that locking people up doesn't make them better, and it doesn't help the community. Now, I think you all know that, and you know that police lead to people being locked up. Now, if you want to follow your conscience, and once you know you'll vote against these three police officers because there is no evidence to support their hiring.
Thank you very much. Excuse me.
Council, the next individual on the attendees list with their hand raised is Amber. Allow them to speak now.
Hello, good evening, mayor and council. I, I first want to state support for the Summer Jazz Series. I attended that event on Friday and thought it was the greatest community experience I've had in years. It's definitely something worthy of support, and it also raises the question of potentially building a permanent bandshell somewhere in the city, maybe Riverside Park in the future. Another thing I'd like to bring up is asking when meetings return to in-person. I've been speaking to a few people around town, mostly older residents, and, and they don't have good access to Zoom. It's a barrier for them to attend and participate in these meetings, which is potentially disenfranchising, so I just want to bring that issue up. I want to thank council members, Summerville and Will Coxon, for bringing up the vote to increase the police budget. I hope that you use that discussion time to reverse the decision to put the city into a million-dollar shortfall for this very short-sighted solution in hiring patrol police. And to do that, because, you know, we have to basically right a previous wrong that was done, the entire problem is that y'all should have gotten public input and in a publicly noticed hearing from the start, from the jump. So now that we're here, we have to kind of do things backwards. So if you can reverse that decision, make a public hearing to talk about the very real issue of public safety, gun violence, police budgets, so that we can hear from everyone and get real noticing out to the community. So please, just, you know, basically start over. One thing we definitely know is that the police doesn't stop, prevent, or help domestic abuse that was brought up, so I just wanted to make that clear. And on the broader sense, to quote Chief DeJusse himself, "The police don't keep the community safe at all." "The community keeps the community safe." It's a direct quote from him. My conversations with residents in the south side so far have entirely been about just sharing information out because no one, people are still figuring it out. People don't know what you all did in May and June. So we're just talking and sharing intel and comparing notes. What I've heard so far is that, you know, people wonder why this was done to the ignorance of residents, and, you know, they suspect that that's something in itself fishy, that it seems like there's some or some relationships that are being emphasized more than like community input. Another question is, where's the data that supports this need for more police? Another question I've heard is requests from south side residents for speed bumps on Hawkins and Second Street because those requests have been ignored from council members, and the suspicion is because the YPT Patrol uses those streets to zoom down all day. Another thing I've heard is that there's been a much heavier police presence and emergency response in the south side and downtown in the last four years or so, and I have experienced that being downtown myself. Those are a few conversations I had. I had one conversation with someone that was very supportive of adding the police, but that was one conversation. "As more folks get hip to the shenanigans that you four of you pull, the more the heat will rise. And if history is anything to learn from an YPS, the political consequences are high when dissent is ignored." I just want to finish by saying, Brian Jones Chance, you must resign. You gotta resign, and that's it. You're not cut out for this. The rest of you, please do the right thing.
Member of the attendees list with their hand raised. If anyone else would like to make comments, please raise your hand now. Seeing no other hands raised, council, if you'd like, I can move on with the, with the agenda.
Please do. If there are no other hands, please. Did I hear someone speak?
I'm agreeing with
Someone just raised their hand, so I can allow them to speak.
Okay, if there's a hand, please call upon them.
V thirty plus Ray Tipton, you have three minutes to address council. You have to unmute yourself.
Mr. Tipton, could you unmute yourself, please? We can't hear you. Are you having difficulty finding the mute button?
Mr. Tipton, you have three minutes to address council. Perhaps we can come back to Ray Tipton, move on to the next individual, and we'll come to The next individual with their hand raised is Desiree Simmons. Allow them to speak now. You have three minutes to address council.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. This is Desiree. I'm walking, so you'll be able to hear that. So I wanted to say to the, to the discussion around the police today, just today, I was in my house and I heard a yada yelling outside down the street, and I was kind of like trying to figure out what was happening. And so I decided to go out and to see because I was hearing someone telling someone to leave very loudly. And so I was going to see like what kind of support they might need, what was happening, to see if it was okay, and they did
Did we lose you? Ms. Simmons?
And then I was thinking, well, what kind of resources are there so that I would even know what to do and how I could support my neighbors? And so for me, when I think about where these resources could go, I'd love to have more resources so that I know how to help support this without having to call the police because it would have been like a situation
Ms. Simmons, you're going in and out, and we're missing some of
That we should Probably can do that.
Ms. Simmons, Ms. Simmons, hold just a second. It might help if you would just stop walking because we're missing big chunks of what you're saying to us. We heard you say that you heard lots of noise outside, you went outside and to ask if you, there was something you could help, and then you went blank for a while, and then you came back saying you wished there were resources, and then you went blank again. So we have missed big chunks of what you were saying. So please That's okay.
I, I'll stop. Okay, so basically, I mean, it was a disturbance, but it wasn't something that needed further intervention, and the person appreciated me being able to come and check in on them. But as I was leaving that space, I was thinking about how a lot of folks probably would have just called the police from hearing the noise, wouldn't have gone out to see what was going on, and maybe for some good reasons, right? Not everyone can do that. But realizing that, you know, I don't have necessarily any resources, where would I turn for any training on how to support that and how not to call the police? And wanting to just make sure that we are keeping that open as we're thinking about what is our full, you know, opportunities and resources so that I wouldn't have had, you know, I didn't, but, you know, to call the police into a situation that was unnecessary.
Okay, unfortunately, Ms. Simmons, your three minutes are up, but thank you so much for sharing with us. And I'm so sorry that you were going in and out so that we didn't hear everything that you said, but we did. Of what I understood was that you're saying that you would like to know resources that would have been available had you needed them. All right, thank you.
Council, the next individual with their hand up is, again, V thirty, Ray Tipton. Allow them to speak now.
Yes, good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Yes, yes, my name is Ray Tipton, and I was born and raised in Ypsilanti on the south side. And I'm a resident of Ypsilanti where I bought my home. And I'm speaking on the fact that we need a more presence of the police in our community because my backyard opens up to Perry School Park, beautiful park, and I love what you guys have done for the park. But every night, at night, there's gun shootings. And as Brother Foley said earlier, there was a shot that was shooting in broad daylight last Thursday, where my neighbor, wife got nicked by a gun, by gun violence. They're speeding, and I would like to know how can we get speed bumps on the corners of Monroe and Hawkins, and Hawkins Street? Because my house is on the base If my wife is bagging out, bagging out the driveway, they can't see them till they come flying over here. People are drag racing up and down the street, and there's gun shootings every night. It's like, like Fourth of July every night. And we need more presence of the police in the community, not just during the daytime, but at night to cover some of this violence that's going on. You know, there's drug dealings going on through the, through the south side of Ypsilanti. And, and I see it every day, and I call to call the police, and they do, they do respond when I call, don't get me wrong. But we need more of a presence, you know? And I love my city, but we need more of a presence of police on the south side of Ypsilanti. Don't cut us short because we're proud of this community, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tipton.
Council, the next individual with her hand raised is Leah Clemmons. Allow them to speak now.
Good evening. My name is Leah Clemmons. I have lived, I've rented in YPS for over a decade. I'm also a local school teacher. And I came to the meeting to report out that in my low-income community that I live in and have lived in for over a decade, that when things happen, it's not the police who diffuse our problems. Like, they might eventually show up, but our problems get diffused by community members whenever something that might be aggressive or violent or just like not great is happening. It, it's not the police that fix it. It's, it's my neighbor who comes out and is talking to the people who are getting into it. It's different community members who handle that. I, I understand that some people want somebody else to be able to come and intervene when, you know, stuff is happening that makes them uncomfortable. But the reality is that most of that stuff happens so fast that the police aren't there to fix it. It's the community that's fixing it. And when someone calls the police, they show up fifteen minutes later. Whatever was going on is over, and then the police are now in that community looking around for somebody that they think did something. And they're pulling people over, or they're talking to people who are walking around, or who might be like sitting on the stoop. And it's just, it's not helpful. Like, I understand wanting more help and more oversight, but hiring more police to solve these problems isn't helping. Our community needs resources if we want to be preventing stuff like this, not more police presence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clemmons.
Council, that was the last individual on the attendees list with their hand raised. Move on to the agenda, which is a proclamation in honor of Mary Anne Hutt. Go ahead and read that now. Whereas Mary Claire and Bill Anne Hutt moved to the city of Ypsilanti in nineteen sixty-three and poured their considerable talents and energy into revitalizing the struggling Huron Molder Inn, the only community-owned hotel at Ypsilanti, and transformed it into a vibrant central gathering place for the city. Where Marie Claire and Bill bought a home on West Cross Street and subsequently raised nine children in Ypsilanti, each one participating in many community, school, and athletic programs. Whereas Mary Claire set the example for expanding a woman's role in society through her many charitable and leadership roles, including becoming the first woman lecturer at St. John's, the Baptist Catholic Church. Whereas Mary Claire served on the executive committee for the nineteen seventy-three Ypsilanti Sess Quinsential Celebration, encouraged her children to participate in performances held at Ypsilanti High School in Shefford Field. Whereas Mary Claire served on the Ypsilanti Community Chess Budget Committee from nineteen seventy, the Washtenaw County United Budget Committee from nineteen seventy-four to seventy-six, and the Michigan United Way Budget Committee from seventy-six to seventy-eight, all of which provided necessary services to the citizens of Ypsilanti. Whereas for the past fifty-six years, Mary Claire has been a vital member and leader of the Ypsilanti Ladies Literary Club, the oldest continuing operating voluntary organization in Ypsilanti, providing not only fellowship, camaraderie, and support to generations of women, but also essential public service to the community. Mary Claire was on the Board of Trustees from seventy-nine to eighty-four, the leadership ladder resulting in her being president from ninety-two to ninety-four, followed by years of service as president of the Board of Trustees. Whereas through Mary Claire's service on the Ypsilanti Ladies Literary Club Scholarship Foundation Board, many dozens of financial scholarships have been awarded to needy Ypsilanti residents to continue their post-secondary level education. Whereas Mary Claire is a fierce believer in the value of education, setting the example for her children by graduating from Eastern Michigan University in Ypsilanti with a bachelor's in written communication, cum laude, at the age of fifty-eight in nineteen eighty-nine. Spurred on by Mary Claire, all nine of her children graduated from college, four from the University of Notre Dame, three from Boston College, and two from Georgetown University, five also earning graduate degrees. Whereas Mary Claire was publicly elected to the Washtenaw Community College Board of Trustees, serving from nineteen ninety to nineteen ninety-six, and as treasurer in nineteen ninety-one, providing guidance and leadership for the education of thousands of Ypsilanti residents. Whereas Mary Claire is an indefatigable advocate for the Catholic education. Her steadfast refusal to allow the closure of St. Thomas High School in Ann Arbor through her service on many boards and commissions resulted in the creation of Father Gabriel Richard High School, which continues to thrive to this day and has provided Catholic instruction to over one thousand Ypsilanti residents through the years. Whereas for almost twenty-five years, Mary Claire served in leadership roles at Bo St. Joseph Mercy Hospital and the Catherine McCauley Health Center, including chairman of the hospital's community advisory board, which resulted in the hospital acquiring the land of its relocation from Ann Arbor to its present location and its ability to better serve the residents of Ypsilanti. Whereas Mary Claire was honored as Ypsilanti Homemaker of the Year in nineteen seventy, received the community service award from Washtenaw Community College in nineteen eighty-six, was named parade marshal with Bill by American Legion Post Number Two Eighty-Two for the nineteen eighty-seven Ypsilanti Fourth of July Parade. And along with Bill, received the Ypsilanti Chamber of Commerce Distinguished Service Award in nineteen eighty-nine. For these laudatory accomplishments and for her many years of service to the Ypsilanti community, we officially became July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one as Mary Claire Anne Hutt Day.
Thank you, Mr. Halingo, for reading that, and Thank you, Mr. Hilingo, for reading that and in the um. Unfortunately, I looked at the attendees list and Ms. Anne Hutt is not um linked in with us to this afternoon. But certainly from the city of Ypsilanti and the mayor's office would like to uh. Uh certainly wish her a very happy birthday. Uh as she celebrates ninety full years and as we heard what her accomplishments. This has been a very busy lady and has added much to the city of Ypsilanti. So uh congratulations on reaching such a milestone. And we do say happy birthday to you.
Counsel, moving with the. With the agenda, the first item is a public hearings adoption of the non-motorized plan update. Resolution number twenty twenty-one, one thirty-one resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas the planning commission chartered the non-motorized transportation advisory committee to work to enact recommendations. Original non-motorized transportation master plan adopted in twenty-ten. Whereas in twenty-twenty, the non-motorized transportation advisory committee determined. Motorized transportation plan was necessary. Whereas the planning commission. Whereas the non-motorized transportation advisory committee supports. As the planning commission recommended, city council adopt the plan update. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council adopted the drafted non-motorized transportation plan update.
I say move.
Support.
You're muted, Mayor.
Mayor, you're muted.
I'm sorry, thank you. Uh, I have heard some background noise and so that was why I muted a while ago. Uh, yes, is there any discussion? I cannot see everyone on my screen, so if you're a council member and your hand is up, please. Speak out so that I will can call on you. Mr. Wilcox.
Uh, just a comment. I, you know, I sat through meetings for the non-motorized uh advisory commission or committee, the subcommittee. Um, and attended the planning committee where they, where they presented on this and, and they put a lot of work into this. Mike Davis, um who was present here and Bob Krinsky both put in a lot of, a lot of time on this with a review of it. And I think that the, the, the measures that they're uh talking about go beyond. Um, you know, just traffic calming to address the um. You know, other, other issues that will affect the quality of life in, in uh Ypsilanti. And I just wanted to say thank you to the both of them and the committee in general for the, the work they put in on this.
Thank you. Any other comments? Discussion? Okay, seeing none, uh I too want to thank the committee and uh congratulate them on all the work that they have done. And appreciate the, not just that this is the end, but their ongoing work also. So, Mr. Hilinga, would you please call the roll?
Counsel, this has a um, a public hearing and I do believe any plan or any Andy Admont. Hamant and uh Bob Preszewinski and Mike Davis Chair Junior are here to.
Here to present. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I can, uh, good evening, counsel. I can give a brief summary if um. If that might kind of make sense here. Um, about the background of this plan and how it was uh kind of formulated, so. Um, first of all, the, the committee, um as you probably know, is an advisory committee to the uh planning commission. And they work with planning commission and generally with DPS for implementation of certain projects. So the committee was formed in two thousand and ten for the non-motorized plan, the original one. Um, and really the, the plan's purpose is to improve walking, bicycling, skateboarding, et cetera. Um, you know, not driving a personal vehicle. Um, you know, other modes of transportation other than uh personal vehicles. So broadly, transit can also be tied into the picture. Um, you know, not everybody has a personal vehicle. Or people may not choose to drive a personal vehicle for personal preferences, so. Um, you know, the city's deemed this as very important in the last few years. Um, really, the committee's pushed to have an updated plan. They've been pushing really since two thousand and fifteen, but really got serious um more recently in two thousand and twenty. Um, and really this, this plan has been worked on by the committee. Um, for most of the two thousand and twenty meetings and all of their two thousand and twenty-one meetings. Um, so really the non-motorized committee voted to approve their plan at the May thirteenth meeting. And then planning commission opened up a public hearing. Um, that started shortly after that and then ended on June fourteenth. A lot of public comments were received. A lot of them were, were, were positive. I think all of them were, were positive about the plan. Um, and then city staff and the non-motorized committee considered the comments and made a recommendation to planning commission regarding the comments. And planning commission chose to um approve the plan as well, and that's the recommendation. Um, that they forward over to you tonight. So, um, yeah, like Andrew said. Um, Bob Krinsky, um, the chair of the committee and Mike Davis Junior. Who is the planning commissioner representative on the committee are also on the call. Um, Bonnie and Ron Akers with DPS can also possibly speak about implementation stuff, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amat. Any other presentation? Or comment?
Uh, yeah, Bob Krinsky here. Uh, I just again like to really uh thank all the, my fellow committee members, especially Mike Davis. And the city staff specifically Bonnie, uh, public services and Andy and planning. For all the work that they put into this non-motorized plan update. It's, it's really great to see. And we live in such a, a, a great growing community for uh non-motorized use. You could just about walk anywhere in town on sidewalks. We've got a growing number of bicycle facilities. It's gonna even get. Better next year with the uh Huron Hamilton and uh long-lost uh plan to get to non-motorized users over I ninety-four. On uh, on Huron. You know, you know, we got a countywide trail goes right through the center of our city. We're, you know, we're doing lots of great things and this plan will help. Uh, keep things going in the future. So again, uh, thank you, everybody, for all their help getting this plan together. And uh strongly urge you to the council approve the non-motorized planned update tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Krinsky, for all the work that you've done and are doing. Appreciate it. Is there any comments or questions or discussion from counsel? Mr. Davis, did you want to share with us?
I, I was, but Bob did such a fantastic job that he took the words right out of my mouth, so I'm all set. Unless folks have any questions that Bob or I can help answer.
Alright. Any questions? Comments? Alright, thank you. Uh, Mr. Hilinga, would you call the roll, please?
We'll have to open a public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Um, if anyone in. Would like to make comments on the passage of the non-motorized plan, now would be the time. Please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, um, now be time for a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close public record, I mean, close public hearing.
Second.
There's been moved and second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Alright.
I.
I.
I, thank you. Oh. If there's no further discussion or Mr. Hilinga, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Number Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Counsel, moving on to the next section of the agenda, ordinances first reading. It's thirteen seventy-seven, twenty twenty-one, spring/summer traffic control orders. Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the traffic review committee has reviewed several traffic control requests. And made appropriate recommendations based on best practices, city ordinance, and city policy. And whereas the city manager recommends city council provide final approval for the traffic control orders listed above. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council hereby approves traffic control orders as listed and adopts an ordinance entitled twenty-two. Summer traffic control orders.
I'll move.
There's support? Alright, thank you. Okay, it's been moved and supported and this Wesler, I see you have. Joined us. Are you, do you have a presentation for us?
No, I'm just here to answer questions. It's be straightforward, I hope.
Alright, thank you. So any questions or discussion for Ms. Wesler? Okay, seeing now, Mr. Hilinga, do what you do best.
Um, counsel, this does have a public hearing, so if you'd like to open the public hearing and we can uh. So the, if anyone, there is one individual with their hand raised and this is a public hearing is specific to the traffic control orders. Uh, first individual with their hand raised is Floki and I'll allow them to speak now.
Hi, I'm just speaking on um, right now, when you were talking about the enforcement. Of the traffic laws and ordinance while ensuring equity and transportation system being difficult task. And that many, that our community is having. And um that you recognize that there is some um disproportionate. Uh. Ways that the police have been addressing uh community, uh communities of color. And how we are trying to mitigate that. I like that this plan is trying to mitigate that. And I think that we need to do more to mitigate that. Um, that's all I have to say in order to the traffic ordinance. I'm reading directly off of the traffic ordinance. And then when um uh. Sorry, I'm referencing my notes. Um, also, the fact that the tickets are used to create revenue and that you are discussing about the tickets. Um, creating revenue uh and possibly uh how we can make that more consistent. Um, I think that kind of airs on the side of quotas. And I would encourage people to not have anything that would make it so that there would be anything close to quotas. And then, um. And then on page twenty-one of two hundred and sixty. Um, you directly referenced that people do not feel comfortable to call the police or don't feel like they can bother the police. And I think that's a good point. I think that should remain inside of the document. And um. On page two thirteen, I don't know if this is with traffic or not, but um. Discuss that we have explicit insurance for the police when it comes to discrimination, violation of civil rights and other things. But we don't have that for anybody else. I just think that's a point that um you have pointed out, so um. I think that uh. Those are all the points that had to do with traffic that I wanted to have.
Thank you. Are there any other hands?
Counsel, at this time, whether your hands are raised.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments, discussion from counsel? Okay. Seeing or hearing none. Uh, Mr. Hilinga, we need someone to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing on the traffic control order.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor to close the public hearing?
Alright.
I.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed. And one last ask for questions or discussion on the ordinance. Seeing and hearing none, would you call the roll, please, Mr. Hilinga?
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. French Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Counsel, next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one three five. Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the following items be approved. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one three six, approving the minutes of June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one three seven, approving a youth mini grant for DAPCO. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one three eight, approving an amendment to the Washtenaw Regional Resource Management Authority. Uh, Warmo Articles of incorporation to include Ann Arbor. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one three nine, authorizing the purchase of the Blasden Jubilee twenty-nine G recycling containers.
Their motion?
I moved.
There's support?
Support.
I have a quick question. If I could ask Mr. Barr a question, if he's available.
I believe he's still here. Or if not, Carol Barr is here.
Okay, um, I just want to know if it's possible to amend the consent agenda right now.
Uh, Mr. Barr or Carol, whoever's here, could you answer that question, please?
It's, anything's possible with the will of counsel.
Okay, um.
But is that, is that?
If, if it's counsel's will and desire.
Okay, I, I'd like to move to take resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one three seven. Out of the consent agenda, agenda and put it on the regular resolutions, motions, and discussions.
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved in second to, uh, would you identify that? I don't have.
Yeah, so it's, it's the youth mini grant and the only reason why I'd like to move it out is just because I have some questions about the organization and I don't want to. I don't feel comfortable personally voting on that with, with it being inside the consent agenda without further discussion. I just have questions about it.
Okay, it's been uh moved in second to remove uh the resolution regarding the DAPCO grant. From the consent agenda. Um, would you call the roll, Mr. Hilinga, please?
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now on to the agenda. As amended. Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Council moving on to. Next item on our agenda. Which would be resolutions, motions and discussions. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one four zero resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas the city of Ypsilanti adopted a special events policy and pursuant to the policy, the city council may sponsor an event. If it is of general interest of the public and advances the city's public image. And whereas as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic and the resulting prohibition of large public gathering, the Park Ridge Summer Festival Committee. Time to fund for this event. And whereas the Park Ridge, Park Ridge Summer Festival is one of the few annual events occurring in the Ypsilanti South Side. And whereas without city sponsorship, sponsorship, the event is in danger of not having the financial capability to hold the event. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approves the sponsorship of the Park Ridge Summer Festival and the amount not to exceed five thousand to be allocated from account. Four dash five seven four dash.
So moved.
I'll support.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions or discussion?
I had a comment.
Yes.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to comment. On the the fund that the money is coming from um. When we opted into the sale of recreational cannabis, council adopted language in the ordinance that required community benefits, so. Um, this is, I guess, at least for myself, one effort, I think, to reach towards providing community benefits from the revenue that we received from that. Um, and I'm appreciative of. Brian's support to get it on the agenda, although I know that many of us, I mean, all of us, I think, support the Parker Summer Festival. Um, but I just wanted to highlight that um, it's important for us to keep our word in using the. The revenue that we get from that for community support and benefits.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion, comments?
Is this a Parker? Okay, sorry.
Mr. Morgan?
Is this um? Summer, is this Parker Ridge Summer Fest, is this the same one that Mr. Lawrence was speaking about or was that Jazz, there was something completely different?
There are two different things, the the Summer Fest is uh, the Summer Fest that has been going on now for several years, it's a. Fest that's held at Park Ridge uh.
I know what it is.
Okay.
Thank you, um, what what I'm saying, I appreciate that, Mayor, what what I'm saying is. What what I'm saying is um. Cause we've helped a lot of different groups, it seemed like a lot of groups have uh, great intentions and we do want to support. And it seems like since COVID, um, we've been granting a lot of different groups um, support to make their events happen, so. I just don't want to be um, arbitrary in saying yes or no, so I think. And if we have a policy on how we're going to distribute funds and we have the funds to do it, I'm in supportive of this, um, but I do think um. As time passes, I I I I'll support this one, I think we have to have a more clear defined um, policy after post-COVID. Um, cause some some, or given half of, half of this amount or some things won't be able to continue, um. But I I'm in, I am in favor of this, this time.
Okay, thank you, uh, Ms. Somerville?
I'll, I'll go after everybody else has a chance to speak.
Okay, I saw your hand, I. Are there other hands?
Brian wants to talk.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yeah, I would say, you know, this. Money is coming from the marijuana fund and this is an appropriate use of that funding considering. That this is a, you know, majority black neighborhood and that's who's been disproportionately impacted by marijuana policy over the years, so. I think this is a very appropriate use of these funds. And not only that, but it will go uh, away in helping to uh, I don't know about reducing some of the violent activity. But certainly will give an opportunity for some of the kids in the neighborhood. Who are seeing and experiencing way more than they should be to be kids for a couple of hours.
Thank you. Mr. Wilcoxen, did I see your hand?
Uh, no, but I fully support this, um, at the use of the funds and the the festival in general, I mean, this was. Has always been a great festival and and brings the community together in ways that uh, one of the festivals that was concurrent did not. Um, so I just want to uh, say I'm fully in support of this for all the right reasons.
Uh, Ms. Brown, Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I just wanted to just state my support as well, I think Summer Fest has over the years done a lot with a little. And so I think it's very um, pertinent for us to be supporting them financially in this way to allow them to, you know, do. As much as possible um, for the community after a year of us kind of being indoors and not being able to do some of the fun things that we have. You know, been able to do, so I am in full support um, of using these funds in this manner.
Okay, are there any other council hands up? Okay, seeing none, I am, I too am in support of us um, supporting uh, Summer Fest. Uh, I do believe and we have, we have supported Summer Fest uh, over the years, we supported both Summer Fest and. The Heritage Festival, uh, I would like to see us support uh, Summer Fest in the. Amount of five thousand dollars rather as a, rather than the ten thousand that um. You're looking surprised, am I saying something wrong, Mayor Pro Tem?
It it's five, it's five in the.
It was, it was ten originally, but it's five now.
The original. I'm sorry, okay, I'm in favor, okay, thank you.
Hopefully next year we can give ten.
Well, possibly, yes, okay, and Ms. Somerville, you wanted to say something.
Oh, yeah, I guess. So, yeah, I think that some organizations in the city that maybe sometimes ask for sponsorships or fee waivers. Aren't used to being able, being offered the funds without asking and this was kind of a situation where we offered them the funds without them having to come and ask us. And I think the initial response was, well, what would we do with ten thousand dollars? Because they're not used to having extra to plan for more, so um. Originally, Brian and I requested ten thousand dollars and then we brought it back down to five. But I hope next year that we can all work together and offer more from this fund, specifically since the fund is from the. The sale of recreational cannabis, um. But anyways, it sounds like everybody's supportive, I'm thankful for that, we, if we went, after we approve this, we'll have thirty-five thousand dollars left. To um, provide other community benefits in the city, so um, that's all.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, Mr. Hulenga, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Somerville?
You were muffled, we didn't hear you.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Council moving on to the next item, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one four one. It is resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the certain leasing operation and management agreement between the city of Ypsilanti and the Ypsilanti Senior Center. And Michigan Nonprofit Corporation is approved and the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign for and on behalf of the city. Subject to the approval of the Ypsilanti City Attorney.
I'll move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Questions, discussion? Comments? Mr. Wilcoxen?
Um. I was looking at this, this. Memorandum or this lease and and curious about the uh, section eight. Um, which deals with the operation and and um, maintenance of this facility and and. They can eat B. Um. It lists out what the the center is responsible for in terms of repair and replacement, but then um, you know, obviously the city is 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 on the hook for the big. Big ticket items like the the walls and the roof and things like that. And. It's a general question in terms of all of these things, we have different friends of groups that are running things and and how if if this is standard operating procedure for those things and where. Um. It seems like we're we're maintaining the building but but not contributing anything to operational costs in terms of utilities or things like that, there there are business that's required to do that as the renter. Um, and I know that I've been posed a question by other groups um. About whether that can change, um, so I guess that's a question for for Mr. Barr and if we change one, do we have to change them all? Um, you know, that's kind of where I am.
Mr. Barr, if you're with us?
Yes, um, good evening, council.
Good evening.
Spending time between two meetings, but I'm here. Um, the history on this is back some years when Ed Crisno was city manager, the city was on hard times. And they closed the recreation department, they were, they closed the senior center and different things. Some uh, public spirited citizens stepped forward and said, well, let us help, we want to keep this open and so we'll run it. And um, one of the things that uh, the policy was made that we would work with citizen groups, but we wanted. A viable foundation, we wanted a corporation of five oh one C three. But the senior citizen center worked on kind of a hybrid method for many years, several years. And then a few years ago, they decided they're going to form this five oh one C three. Fortunately, a local citizen, Carl Shire, who's an attorney, retiring attorney. Stepped forward and said he would help the senior center uh, form the five oh one C and work with the city. And so they did that, it took them about a year, they got a five oh one C federal tax exempt corporation going. And then they approached uh, the city to work out a plan and all this time, the center was continuing to go. Then the pandemic hit and the center kind of shut down during this time, we finished up the agreement and um. Before the um, before this time, when the city had the money, the city paid everything for the senior center. Although they did get grant money from the county and other places. What this does is the, this group, this group of citizens said they will go out and raise money, kind of like the Rutherford Pool. And uh, they will run the program, they will staff the program, they will have all of the um, items for the. But program to go forward, but they would like the city to maintain the um, exterior and the mechanicals. And so this seemed like a good idea, I looked at it, I recommended. And um, to answer your question, no, we don't have to make all of these different groups the same uh, for a number of reasons, partly because they're all different.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none or hearing none. Mr. Lengel, would you call the role, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Council, the next section on the agenda is twenty twenty-one dash one four two. Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the premium for the property and liability insurance renewal for the city of Ypsilanti effective August first, twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two. With the Michigan Municipal League MML liability and property pool be approved in the amount of three hundred and ninety-four thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. Yet further resolved that the city manager is authorized to sign and approve payment of invoice.
I'll move.
Or?
It's been moved and supported. Questions, comments, discussion? Mr. Wilcoxen?
I'm jumping, I'm jumping. Um, I I was going through this policy and I and I thought it was interesting in light of the the recent events um. Uh, that um, there's a line in there and there's no coverage for sewer backup. And uh, there's also a million dollar flood insurance, um, but um. You know, I've talked to a number of constituents that said that they were not able to get flood insurance because they're not in the flood plain, so I'm I'm. Wondering what that would look like for the city and is this um, just on city buildings and so city properties for sure, but. I I'm wondering why we can get flood insurance and other people can't.
They would have to speak to, they would have to speak to their own insurers, this MML provides flood insurance for city facilities and property. And sewer backup, Ron can correct me, are an issue for the Ypsilanti Community Utility Authority.
Mr. Uh, Hulenga, you were kind of muffled at the end, could you repeat that last part again, please?
Last part in in the DPS director um, could correct me if I'm wrong, but Ypsilanti Community Utilities Authority is responsible for sewer backups.
And uh, Clark Lengel, that is correct, you know, any complaints regarding sewer backups should be referred to uh, YCUA.
I have a question about that.
I understand that, but I I was, I was, I was under the impression from from a number of people that. That we weren't eligible for flood insurance because we weren't in a flood plain. And if that's not a real policy, you know, this would say that it's not, and I'm, I guess I I would be interested in. I I I I will have to do my homework and figure out why people are not able to get individual flood insurance in the city of Ypsilanti, but the city is. So um, I will check on that later, I guess.
I think that is due to the um, the policy and the insurance. And the reinsurance that is available through the MML for municipalities.
Um, Mayor, I can answer the question about the.
Okay, if you would, please, thank you.
So so um, flood insurance is subsidized through the federal government. And so FEMA provides a lot of um, a lot of the the flood insurance policies, now I believe it is possible for individuals to get insurance for basement backups and those type of things. But um, flood insurance is is a federally subsidized program and it's offered through the federal government. Um, I believe there are certain situations where you are required to purchase a policy if you have a federal mortgage and there there's some other stipulations, but um. But uh, those homeowners may have to contact FEMA to see if flood insurance is available to them. Um, I can email website if uh, if everybody's interested.
Okay, right, because I I looked at the FEMA map for Ypsilanti and there was like nothing there, there was, there was nothing that was designated as a FEMA flood plain. And um, and I wasn't. I was just curious about the difference between the two two abilities, but if, you know, if it's a specifically a national or a federal program. Um, through FEMA that these people are lacking, then then I need to understand that a little bit better, so I will look that up. Thanks.
Mr. Acres, would you um, pull up information on that, please, and um, provide it for council and maybe. Uh, at the next uh, meeting, do a a short presentation on it?
I can look and and get, put some information together for council.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, can I just ask a question, I guess?
Sure.
Oh, so so I just want to make sure I understand this too, and the way I'm reading this is that essentially this is like an MML package that's kind of unique to municipalities. And so part of their package, they, it's kind of, this is what we offer, and so there's a component of flood insurance with that, and so. In relation to uh, Yucca with the the sewer backups, I mean, it sounds like it's treated as it would be for our residents. Um, you know, Yucca is only responsible and kind of uh, if if there's some failure of their system. but they're not, just because we have a sewer backup in the city, a sil- city building, um, I'm assuming that, you know, we wouldn't have any more benefit, I guess, to that, you know, than a, than a resident, you know, it would have to be their failure, you know, some, one of their systems, a pump or whatever. Is that accurate?
And that question is to Mr. Acres.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
From, from what I understand about the way, um, flood insurance is that, uh, municipalities' utilities are covered on something called Public Act, uh, two twenty two, which essentially waives some of the liabilities for acts of God when you have, you know, very significant rain events. I'm not sure, and I can't comment on the city's insurance policy and how that is handled by the MML. Um, because we're a municipality, we are a little different. Um, I, I don't have that information for, for council. Um, I don't, I don't know, uh, Clark Lang, if you know the answer to that, but, um, but I, I do not.
I do not have any information offhand either.
Okay. No, thanks. Thanks. I guess that's all right now.
Thank you. Any other questions or Mr. Jones Chance?
Yeah, I'm curious to know what our, uh, dividend return was last year.
Um, it was lower. I can give that to you. The dividend return last year was twenty three thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, hearing none. Mr. Helanga, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Summer.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes.
Councilwoman Will Coxon.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Motion carries your names. Council moving on to the next item, resolution number twenty twenty one dash one four three. Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the Kiwanis of Ypsilanti are celebrating their centennial year. Whereas the Kiwanis of Ypsilanti have contributed greatly to parks and recreation system in Ypsilanti since their inception, particularly Recreation Park and regarding Rutherford Pool. Whereas the Kiwanis would like to place a marker to celebrate their centennial and their contribution in Recreation Park near the Rutherford Pool. Whereas the Parks and Recreation Commission has reviewed and supports the request in Ypsilanti Kiwanis Club to place a commemorative marker in Recreation Park. And now therefore be it resolved that the city council hereby supports the Kiwanis request to place a boulder with commemorative plaque as specified memo dated May third, twenty twenty one.
So move.
For.
Been moved and supported. Questions, comments, discussion? Ms. Westler, did you have a presentation for us?
Again, no presentation. It seemed pretty straightforward. I'm going to answer questions.
All right. Thank you.
I, I.
Any questions or come, Mr. Uh, Morgan, do I hear you?
Yes. Uh, I was wondering with the skate park next to the basketball court, when those renovations were made, is there, did, did any contracts, um, get bid on for that, for that project?
Uh, the skate park began a little bit before my time, but my understanding is that it, uh, began as a purely grassroots and informal effort.
It seemed like, um, people were just come pouring concrete, just, just measuring and doing work without permits, without grants, without any permission even. And so I'm wondering, it takes seventy thousand dollars. Who, who wants, well, part of what renovation project has this been asked for? Cause I mean, as far as only like two cracks in that ground. And, um, so I'm wondering, um, wh- what's the push to create this new basketball court?
I believe that you might be skipping a wee bit ahead in the agenda.
You are.
Okay.
Mr. Morgan, we're on the, the Kiwanis of.
Oh, the low, the boulder, the boat, the plaque. Thank you. Ah, I support this. I'm sorry, I'm a little ahead of the game. I apologize. I see Councilman Will Coxon ready to correct me. Thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, I appreciate that. I, I apologize and I support this bullet.
No problem. Councilmember Somerville.
Um, also a different basketball court, Anthony. Um, yeah, I just wanted to voice my support for this and also say hello to Bill. I know he's on the call. Thanks for joining us.
Any other questions or comments? Discussion? Okay, seeing none. Uh, would you call the role, please, Mr. Helanga?
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Summerville.
Yes.
Motion carries your names.
All right. Thank you.
Council moving on to the next resolution resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas the basketball court at Park Ridge Park is in poor condition. And whereas replacement of the concrete at the Park Ridge Basketball Court will extend the life of the basketball courts and improve the condition of the park. And whereas the city of Ypsilanti goal setting report for this fiscal year has a goal to continue to upgrade city parks. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council approves GM and Sons to complete the removal and replacement of the concrete at the Park Ridge Park Basketball Court with the amount of sixty eight thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars with any change orders to be approved by the city manager.
So move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Questions, discussion, comments? And Mr. Acres, did you have a presentation for you? Are you just here to answer questions?
Well, I, I can give an overview of the council summary if, if you would prefer.
I would, please. Thank you.
Okay. So as part of our park improvement program, we're proposing to remove and replace the concrete at the basketball court at Park Ridge Park. Um, last fall, we had a company come in and grind down the gaps in the concrete slabs around the perimeter of the sports courts there. Um, and seal some of the larger gaps in the concrete that vegetation was growing out of. Our original intent with this project was to have cracks in the middle of the court sealed and have both of the courts actually resurfaced. Um, but based on the feedback we received from some of the contractors who do the resurfacing work, there was not a guarantee that the method would be effective. They actually indicated that even by doing that work, cracks could resurface, um, in the, uh, top of the court within a year. Um, based on that feedback, uh, we are recommending the removal and replacement of the concrete of the basketball court. If approved, uh, the attached proposals for a contractor to come in and remove and replace the concrete only. Um, staff will work with another contractor to install the proper surfacing and striping on the court. After the court has been sealed and striped, uh, there is a community group that is interested in painting a mural on the court. So, um, to attempt to answer Councilmember Morgan's question, to take a step back, uh, the original, uh, what I guess initiated this discussion was we had a group of individuals, uh, from the south side who are interested in painting a mural on the basketball court at Park Ridge Park. So one of the things that we were trying to do with our park improvement program and our commitments to making improvements at Park Ridge Park was to figure out a way to rehab the basketball court so that mural would be able to, uh, stick around longer and to make sure that, uh, that that court was in good condition for years to come. Um, so that was, that was the original discussions of it. And as I had indicated, we explored some, some cheaper alternatives to this to see if it would be a, a functional, um, maintenance plan. And, and based on the feedback we received from some of the contractors, it looked like the only way to, to really rehab it and keep it in good condition for several years was to replace the concrete. So, uh, when we were evaluating, oh, I'm sorry. Fire or noise. I thought somebody chimed in. I apologize. Um, when evaluating the project, uh, staff reached out to GM and Sons, who is the contractor we rewarded our CDVG and Metro Ramp projects to last year, uh, to help us get a cost estimate as to what the, the project would cost. As part of that discussion, GM and Sons indicated that they would be willing to honor last year's concrete and other, the other quantities, the rehab, um, bid prices for the project. So attached is a proposal for the concrete that reflects the pricing. Um, as a reminder, the quantity of prices that we received last year for the Metro Ramp program were obtained through a competitive sealed bidding process in which GM and Sons was the lowest qualified bidder. Staff also reached out to our engineering firm, OHM, to verify that the quantity prices were within or below the ranges that they were seeing for current construction projects this year. And OHM had indicated that the prices were within those range. So based on that analysis, we're comfortable that using last year's bid prices, uh, we are receiving a competitive quote from the contractor. Uh, the quoted amount for the concrete portion of this project is sixty eight thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. The quoted amount, just for clarification sake, the quoted amount is for the removal and replacement of approximately sixty by a hundred and twenty three foot concrete slab where the basketball court is. It does not include the removal and replacement of the tennis court areas, concrete or the concrete slabs around the perimeter of the court. As part of our original discussions, we did request a quote for the full replacement of both the basketball court and the tennis court, um, which excludes the perimeter concrete slabs. And we included that quote in the, uh, packet for council. That quote was a hundred and thirty three thousand, eight hundred and seventy. At this time, staff is not recommending the full replacement of the basketball and tennis courts, uh, as we do not have enough funds allocated to complete the full replacement. Um, I have attached in the packet an aerial photo which depicts these areas roughly. Um, if council approves this, work with the contractor to schedule the work and we will select a contractor to place surface on the concrete and stripe the court. Uh, I apologize for the long summary. I'm happy to answer any questions.
No, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Are there any questions or comments?
Yes. Um, again, let me apologize. I was at the wrong place, wrong time. We're not talking about Prospect. We're talking about Park Ridge. A question. I see the aerial view and at the top it says, um, the option two basketball courts. So we're looking at the aerial view with one tennis court and one basketball court. Are they going to make two, uh, parallel basketball courts? Is that, is, is that an option or is that what the plan is?
So our, what we are recommending as staff is just the replacement of the basketball court. So you'll see in the packets on page two twenty seven, it's option one. Um, that is the option for sixty eight thousand dollars. We did request, um, the full replacement of both the basketball and the area where the tennis courts are. But due to the significant cost of it, it just doesn't fit within our parks improvement budget.
Okay. So what would stop a regular group of, of folks, um, using that? Um, according to option one, using the tennis court to make another skate park on the south side if they were so inclined. Um, what would stop a group, if you're going to just re, re, uh, refurbish one court? What would stop a group from creating a skate park off a tennis court on the south side? Knowing that, um, the one in war three wasn't really, um, followed any protocols.
In, in this instance, if, if somebody attempted to do that, uh, we as staff would stop them and, and they would have to make a request to city council to make that change.
Um, I'm interested in why that didn't happen in war three.
I think it actually, oh, sorry.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Councilmember Murdock worked pretty closely with the people who organized the Prospect Park, um, skate park. And though, and I will say throughout the years that friends of mine have been active with that skate park. They were very close with, um, Councilmember Murdock. And they also participate every year in the cleanup and organize cleanup days at Prospect Park. So.
That's awesome. Very, nobody came in front of council and asked for any permission to do anything over in war three. And I get how much they've been involved or in the late great Councilmember Murdock. I'm saying there has been very little legal procedural ways of creating a skate park in war three. Now, I appreciate the fact that they've all done it and put their own money and resources behind it like they could do potentially in war one. I just wanted to know, since there is an open tennis court that won't be revamped and is still there with no purpose, could a citizen or a group of citizens utilize that space the way it's utilized across the city? That's all I was asking, but I appreciate.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. I thought you were through. The tennis court at, uh, Park Ridge Park is used. In fact, it's used by the, um, um, of the girls tennis team.
Is it?
From YPS. Yes, it is used. Miss, uh, Karen.
I don't see a tennis court. I don't see a tennis net on it from this aerial view. This could be.
Well, there's not. Now they take the nets down and put them up because the nets were, were, when they were left there, they were destroyed. So they are taken down and put up. But that tennis court is very active.
Wow. I appreciate that. I'm just saying, for whatever intended purpose a tennis court is created for, of course, we can skate on it now and I'm glad to do that. So I, I, I support the, the, the re-striping and the re-poring. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones Chance.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I see that the, the border on the option one illustration, it, can you tell me where the actual border is? Um, because I know there's the report part on the, around the perimeter. Um, where all the graffiti is. And I just, I don't know if it's going to be painted over or if it's going to be replaced in this project. So I'm just curious where the actual, uh, outline might be if this is, you know, a little bit.
The, the outline, um, it, it, it should be approximately at the halfway point, um, between the, for the concrete that's between the outside perimeter. So about where the, the fence is that separates the basketball court and the, uh, and the, um, uh, tennis court. As part of the, the work that we did, um, we did have, there, there's a, I believe there's a drain over there that we had adjusted. Um, when we were originally doing some of the grinding work on the outside, uh, we wanted to, to make sure the basketball court was draining properly. But yeah, I believe that area will be, will be included in the replacement as well.
Okay. So maybe they'll paint the, the perimeter will be painted or something to cover the graffiti because, um, it's very difficult to clean up.
I, I will go take a look at, I'm not familiar with the graffiti that's out there right now. I'll go take a look and see if there's a way we can, we can address it.
Yeah, I've, um, tried scrubbing it before and I am pretty sure I made it worse. So.
Mr. Uh, Morgan.
I just want to ask what community group was planning on creating some type of inscription on the court?
It was, I do not know the name offhand. I know they were working with a, um, with, with, I think it was one of the arts teachers at the, the school, um, city manager McMullen. Do you know the name of the group?
Well then, excuse me. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The artist is, um, Shannon Williams. He's a lifelong Ypsilanti resident whose home actually abuts the park. I mean, he's right behind the park. And he brought a proposal and his proposal, um, had some artwork and also he would, uh, pay for the paint and all of that. And so he wanted to do it, uh, with the court as it was. And we decided that we wouldn't allow him to invest that kind of money into painting it in time when the part, when the, um, the foundation was so cracked up, you know, it needed to, it needed work. And so that's kind of how, uh, the project evolved. Um, and since we do have, uh, funding, we invest, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand into our parks each year. Um, I had made the administrative decision that instead of us just spreading it around like we did in prior years, we put a, a bench over here and something over here that we take parks one at a time. And so since someone, and we've never had a proposal like this, I didn't feel that we needed to take it out and see who wants to do something because no one was knocking our door down saying they wanted to. saying they wanted to improve it on their own. And the Parker Ridge staff was in was supportive of it, Mr. Williamson, Brian Foley and all of the staff was very supportive of the idea. And I think in order for it to last, we made the decision that we needed to replace that foundation or it would be gone in next year and his work and his his efforts and his products would just be wasted. So that's how that came about. The project was brought to us.
Okay, so so he's been approved when when it so when it, when we do the remodeling of the Park Ridge, he he has indeed the contract or the will to do what he was gonna do before?
Yes, and there's not a contract really, he's just agreed, just like the the people that painted the mural, the Black Lives Matter mural, we accepted there off, you know, they got the paint and did whatever they did. This would be the same.
Thank you, City Manager, thank you, mistake.
Mr. Will Coxson.
I'm trying to think of where there are other concrete basketball courts in the city and and the parks that I remember seeing are all asphalt, and I was just wondering if you can address the longevity of concrete versus versus asphalt and then the cost is associated with that difference?
So concrete is a longer lasting product than asphalt for roads and basketball courses or basketball courts, excuse me. The asphalt tends to expand and contract a little bit more and it forms very noticeable crack patterns in it. Concrete and specifically, you know, concrete sidewalks, you know, as long as they're well poured and you don't drive vehicles on them, they they tend to last very, very long. What they're going to be doing with this project is they're gonna be pouring it as a one concrete slab and then they're gonna be coming back with a concrete saw and cutting expansion joints in it. So that'll give the concrete enough room to move seasonally as the weather changes. So it should avoid any any significant cracking. The resurfacing group is actually gonna come in, they use specific types of acrylics and different things that to actually put a hard top on it and put a quart, so below it, you know, the concrete will be able to move back and forth like it does seasonally and the top shouldn't be shouldn't be impacted with that, but to to kind of give a short summary, concrete lasts longer than asphalt, it is it a is it is a preferable construction material for longevity. The only air area that we have a concrete basketball court in the city is at Park Ridge. That is a concrete basketball court, the other basketball courts that we have at Prospect and Rock Park are both asphalt.
Any other, are you still speaking, Mr. Will Coxson, if so, you're muted.
I was just mouthing, thank you, that phone.
Oh, okay, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments, discussion? Okay, seeing or hearing none, uh, would you call the role, please, Mr. Helanga?
Councilmember Will Coxson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Council moving on to the next resolution. Resolution number two twenty one dash one four five resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the city seeks to assist residents with the procurement and installation of solar roofs and is actively seeking grant funding opportunities to minimize costs to the homeowners. And where Habitat specializes in providing homeownership opportunities to families of low income in Ypsilanti and has identified four homes that could benefit from solar installation. Habitat has expressed interest in cooperating with the city to serve as a fiduciary for grant funding opportunities given its five oh one C three tax status. And as the city is cooperating with Habitat staffing to support grant identification, grant administration and oversight and grant content development. Furthermore, the city will commit the staff needed to coordinate with homeowners throughout the process of solar installation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approves a memorandum of understanding as provided.
Support.
They moved and supported, Mr. Jacobs, do you have something to present to us, how are you this evening?
I'm very well, it's good to be with you, Mayor and City Council, and thanks for your consideration of this memorandum of understanding with Habitat for Humanity. You might remember several months ago, Dave Stransky came to a meeting and briefed City Council on the tremendous progress that's being made over the past fifteen years, going from zero to one point eight, one point three eight megawatts of solar power with only about twenty one thousand residents, that puts sixty six watts per resident and puts us in the top twenty in the nation for solar power on a watts per capita basis. And you know, that's incredible progress that we've made in the solar arena. And I gotta give my hat off, hats off to Dave Stransky. He's been really integral to that investment in Ypsilanti. And he's approached the city about pursuing grant opportunities to continue that work. We've identified several grant opportunities and he's been working with staff in our department, Jada, myself and others to submit applications on behalf of the city. Or most of those grants require a five oh one C three nonprofit status to be the applicant. So we did a little digging, identified Habitat for Humanity as a really good partner as a fiduciary on the solar projects, so we set up a meeting with their president and a gentleman named Rob Nisley. They were really, really helpful, we developed the memorandum of understanding after a couple conversations where we saw there was a clear overlap between some of Habitat's goals and some of the city's goals. The MOU is contingent upon receiving grant funding and the MOU is meant to identify the roles of Habitat, the roles of city, particularly the staff obligations to work with property owners throughout the process, getting utility bills, stuff like that. And for Habitat to serve mainly that receiving and distribution of the funds from grants that we are awarded. The memorandum of understanding follows the RFL. I'm happy to take any questions and we do have Dave with us to answer any technical stuff about the solar installation that I might not be able to to answer.
Thank you, Christopher.
No problem.
Any questions or discussion?
I have one question.
Yes, Mr. Morgan.
Well, I just want to say I'm so appreciative of Ypsilanti being on the forefront of solar technology. But I heard Mr. Stransky's mention in his comment that they're looking to do solar on a hundred low income homes. Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, so the goal of this particular grant push is located in Ward One. There are lots of homes that would benefit from grant funding where the homeowners may not have the capital or access to capital to get a a solar installation project done. And so we're targeting homes that are set up for solar, that are homeowner occupied to make those investments and leverage some of the other stuff like the NEZ tax credit in that area and trying to layer a few different tools that we have on top of one another to reach that target demographic for solar installation because we know what that does for low income folks to have that kind of independence in utilities and to to lower their utility costs.
So I want to ask a question, was there a lottery created? What, so you're talking about, we're talking about low income homes or low income people inside of their homes?
And and. Low income homeowners.
Low income homeowners, was there a lottery to pick these hundred people or was it randomly selected or was it a program?
They haven't been selected yet, so we would secure the grant funding and then approach homeowners in in this target area that are eligible for other incentives and and see who's interested in doing so. But there hasn't been any homes selected yet.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
No problem.
I would just like to offer that Mr. Stransky has been doing some work in the area over the last, last couple of years, I think it started back in either twenty nineteen or twenty twenty and that he was made it available for some homes, there were, I think, two or three people and maybe a church or two that took advantage of the offer, so.
I do see Dave with his hand up and if it would please counsel.
Yes, please, I can't see him, but yes. Please, Mr. Stransky. Andrew, would you mind promoting him to panelists, so yes, there he is, thank you.
Hey, this is Dave. Uh, to answer to answer Mr. Morgan's question, the reason we're targeting this particular group is because I started off with the opportunity zone. And so that's a federally defined zone of low income homes. And then I went and took the the NEZ, so Ypsilanti has a neighborhood enterprise zone and I actually, they don't overlap totally, they you know, they intersect, so I took the 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 intersection of those two groups. So we started off with, there's nine hundred and thirty five owner, I'm sorry, homes in the NEZ. Half of those are owner occupied and then if I filter out who's in the opportunity zone, that brought the list down to about two hundred and fifty homes. And then you were asking questions about a lottery. Again, nobody has been selected yet. The way I was going to approach it was I've actually thrown all two hundred and fifty homes through a program and ranked them on solar exposure. Right, so it makes sense to put solar panels on homes based on who's got the sunniest roof. And so that's how, that's how this was, so so this this list of two hundred and fifty homes is ranked by solar exposure and we would basically start at the top of that list and work our way down through it until we either hit a hundred homes or we run out of money or whatever. And for citizens that are not in this program, I think they will also benefit, so I want you to imagine, this is kind of what my my goal here is imagine the city gets a million dollars and we're gonna budget ten thousand dollars per home, so that's a hundred homes. And we put out for bid for contractors to come and install a hundred solar installations within a few square blocks. I mean, currently a solar installer installer is going to Lansing or Grand Rapids or Detroit, lots of overhead, lots of transportation. If a solar contractor could focus on just a few square blocks, they're gonna get such economics of scale, our price per watt is gonna be really low. And say you own a house that's not inside this program. I'm sure that 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 solar installer is gonna be willing to put stuff on your house too, you won't get it for free, but you'll get it at a really great price because the solar installer is already there, he's already doing a hundred homes. To add one more will just make his economics of scale even better, so that's kind of the idea is we we focus on one area, we drive, we artificially drive the price of solar down to a lower price point and now many more people in the city of Ypsilanti can now afford to go solar. And then maybe we drive down the price even more with the larger volumes and now everybody in the county gets a lower price because we have, we have artificially dropped the price of solar by getting economics of scale and by removing a lot of transportation and material costs.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan, did you have another question or comment?
No, it was explained very thoroughly, I'm just, in my mind, I'm determined like if I was a homeowner, like how much I could save, like oh my, no utilities and no solar. I don't have a solar roof, but I'm just wondering like, I know it's a benefit to it, I just wonder how it's gonna be sold and who's gonna buy into it, but I do think it's important for the city.
And and the other and the other reason to to target this particular group is because there's a twenty six percent federal tax credit on solar projects and this opportunity zone has a tax incentive. And both of those are not available to a low income person who may not be paying tax income taxes. And so they're they're disproportionately, you know, unincentivized to go solar. So that's why I'm trying to target this community and and take probably and and try to monetize those tax credits for them.
Thank you.
Mr. Will Coxson.
There we go. I'm monetizing the credits, so with the Rutherford Pool installation, that there was a discussion about whether a third party would have to come in to 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 do that, I I take it that since that hasn't been discussed in any the material in the packet, that 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 doesn't need to happen.
So for Rutherford Pool, that was a, we had a twenty five thousand dollar donation from an anonymous donor. We were going to monetize the tax credits for that nonprofit because they can't take advantage of it to try and get a lower price per watt so that we can install us along a bigger system. Rutherford Pool, we had lots of problems because of the renovations and COVID. And then the the contractor we were working with that was gonna monetize the credits was kind of pushing out the project and at some point we decided to just say the heck with it, we're gonna try and hit the same price point by using all volunteer labor. And so that's what we ended up doing there. So we went volunteer labor instead of monetizing tax credits to kind of get to the same price point.
Thanks.
Thank you, any other questions, comments? From council?
Just to stress, we don't have the money yet, this is only permission to look for money.
Yes, well, I hope you find it. We do, all right.
Mr. Stransky, appreciate it.
Call again for any council member with discussion or comments. Okay, seeing none, Mr. Stransky, thank you so much for all that you have done in the city, all that you are doing and to put our city in the top twenty, that really says a lot and I'm not sure the, I do remember two or three years ago, you went to New York to receive an award for the solar installation and I think I congratulated you then, but another congratulations on that and thank you so much and thank you, Mr. Jacobs, so.
Ypsilanti is the first city in Michigan to get a Soul Spark Gold Award.
Yay, thank you. We appreciate it. Mr. Helanga, would you call the role, please?
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Council moving on to the resolution removed from the consent agenda, resolution number twenty twenty one dash one three seven resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas in the recently concluded this year twenty twenty one dash twenty twenty two, the city council approved a twenty five thousand dollar grant to organizations that serve the youth of the city. And whereas Destiny and Purpose Community Outreach, DAPCO, currently serving the youth in the city of Ypsilanti. And whereas DAPCO has submitted a grant application for five thousand dollars. And now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approves a mini grant to DAPCO in the amount of five thousand dollars for programs to assist community youth and prepare them for employment.
And Miss Summer, Councilmember Somerville, I believe you wanted this spread off, so would you like to start off the discussion?
Well, we have to, so move.
Support.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So it's okay, I I just wanted to be, so I was just curious, um, I was just doing a little bit, I'm not familiar with the organization, but I was looking at their website and I just had some questions. And I just had some questions about what the organization does. Um, is anybody here from the, okay, um, like from the organization, someone's here?
Oh, I don't know if there's anyone here tonight from the organization, but I'm really quite well familiar with the organization.
Okay. No, that's cool. So I just have a question. Some of the language on the website like raised flags for me because I was like, do you, I just want to make sure that they don't run like crisis pregnancy services to deter women from abortions. Is there any way to like verify that?
They support, um, uh, pregnant, uh, young women. And basically, uh, most of the women that they support, they do support, I think of, they've had some married women that have come through, but basically they're, um, they support teenage marriage, uh, pregnant women. I do know that they, uh, have a, a fantastic baby shower every year and they're twice a year and they're uh, now planning for their, um, their, the, uh, one shower within the, which will be a drive-by within the next month or so, next month or six weeks. And, uh, they are, they are well supported by Zingermans and, uh, any number of other, um, I won't, don't want to say agencies, but businesses in the, uh, within the county and within the city of Ypsilanti. They were located right there on Washington Street, right? And I identified as the old Cardi Music Store and some of you might know where I'm talking about or not. They were located there and they were all set to purchase that building and had, um, was in con in, uh, talks with the business, with the building owner. And unfortunately, one of their board members, uh, undercut them and went and bought the building from under them. So they are right now, I know, I know, Mr. Wilcoxen, I know, I know. Um, a well trusted board member undercut them. And so they are right now in the process of trying to be find a more permanent place, uh, and they want to stay in downtown Ypsilanti. They have been there for a number of years. And I do remember when, uh, actually when they started, um, the, um, Ms. Parker, uh, she started out, I believe, I, I first met her uh, running a sewing class up at, um, Park Ridge and uh, sewing is still a part of the, the program that they have with the, with the young women. It is a well-run program. And they've been around for, they didn't just start up. If that answers your questions.
It gives me more information, but it doesn't totally answer my major concern, which is if they deter women from getting abortions.
Not that I know of.
Okay.
Know of. I don't know that I, they serve, you know, pregnant women. I don't know that women that are seeking abortions would, you know, go to their program.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily saying, I just like, some of the language on the website reminded me of crisis, like pregnancy centers that often, you know, mislead women. And in turn, you know, convince them not to terminate a pregnancy if that's what they were initially thinking. So I was just curious if, excuse me, if that's part of the services that, that they provide. Not that this youth, I mean, as far as I know, the, the money would specifically go into the program for bank accounts. It just raised a flag for me and I was curious if that could be answered before voting on it. Um.
As far as I know, I don't, like I said, I've been familiar with the program for a few years now and there's never been anything that I have heard that, you know, would suggest that.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with this, uh, organization either. Um, and thank you for the clarification. I was like, you know, some of the, some of the answers to the question. You know, I saw Detroit address and, and specifically our, you know, how it's being active in the community and I just didn't know about it. So I'm glad to hear that, uh, it is in the city and that the, you know, one of the questions is, you know, how many people are being served uh, currently and, and it said fifteen, but it didn't say whether that was, I was looking at Detroit and something from, you know, one of the things was from Cincinnati as well as that. And I was like, it didn't specifically say that those fifteen people in the program were from Ypsilanti.
So the, the young women that are served here are from the city of Ypsilanti. Or Ypsilanti, you know, in vicinity. Some are from, you know, the township. It's, it's, um, like most of the agencies here, not everybody that's served is specifically from the city. But the majority of the people that are served at this agency are, uh, are from the city. And they do have, uh, they do have a site in Detroit that also serves. And, uh, I'm sorry, there's a fly in my house. I don't know how he got in here and he's bugging me. Uh, if you see me swatting at something, that's what it is. But, um, no, they do have, um, they are connected also with a site in Detroit. So they serve there and they serve here and they're basically two separate, you know, sites. So. Okay, seeing no hands and hearing no voices. Mr. Hilinga, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Summer?
No.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes votes, one no vote.
Thank you.
Counsel, the next item on the agenda is a motion to add by Councilmember Somerville, second by Councilmember Wilcoxen. A motion to amend a, uh, previously adopted resolution, resolution number being twenty twenty dash one zero five E. Uh, Mr. Barr, I do have a, a quick question about this motion.
Yes, sir.
Twenty twenty-one dash one zero five E, amendment to resolution twenty twenty-one dash two zero five, which was the, uh, uh, the budget adoption. Should the motion to amend the previously adopted resolution be the main resolution, the twenty twenty-one dash one zero five?
All right, let me get it straight. The, the motion on the floor is to amend the budget?
It's to amend a previously adopted resolution, the resolution to approve the budget. And it's concerning mostly the, um, what's only concerning the, um, uh, increase of the three officers state, please.
All right, with the budget. I'm going to have to go back and look, but isn't the budget an ordinance?
It is an ordinance approved by resolution.
Right. Well, if, if we're, if we are amending the ordinance, uh, then there are, um, notice requirements, publication requirements.
So and just in terms of procedures, perhaps today would be better to have a discussion and, and move towards a, uh,
Yes, I, I would, I would agree. It seems if this is to amend the, the budget ordinance, uh, I don't think we can do that tonight, but we could certainly discuss it. And if, um, you know, if council desired, we could start that process in motion.
Thanks, Mr. Barr.
Mr. Barr, is it possible to, um, I'm very, I'm very much in agreement with discussing, discussing it, but is it possible that we could, um, set this motion or, um, over, forward to the next meeting so that there can be, uh, a publication of that it would be there would be the discussion on the agenda? Because I believe that there are other people that are not here, would like to be on both sides of the issue, would like to be here for the discussion. But with it not having been, uh, posted.
Well, if in fact this concerns amending the budget ordinance, you cannot do that tonight. But you could start the process. So if, if, what I would suggest is that perhaps council could give staff some idea as to whether or not you would like us to start that process. And you can discuss the issue, you know, but we can't take action.
Right.
Exactly.
I understand what you said, but my question was if we could delay the, even the discussion is.
Well, certainly you can delay things, uh, but that's after the will of council.
Okay.
I mean, I, I mean, is there, is it, can we make a motion with a motion on the floor now? That motion is on the floor, correct?
No, the motion was to amend the agenda to add this.
Well, can we make, can I make a motion to move this discussion to the next agenda? For next council meeting?
Oh, um, I was interrupted. Uh, Councilmember Morgan, you want to know while there's a motion pending on the floor, can you make another motion?
Yeah, I, I thought that the motion was already, I wouldn't make that motion if, the motion, we have to discuss it, whether we're going to take action. In which you said, we can't really take action, we can discuss it. But the mayor just mentioned that she want to move the discussion even further down the road. And so.
Well, it, it depends on the motion. You can make a motion to delay to a certain time. You could make a motion to, um, uh, table the matter, um, but you can't make another primary motion if this one is still on the table. Does that answer your question?
It does. Offer the, there is no motion currently on the table. Uh, councilmembers' motion and second by council, councilmember Somerville's motion and Wilcoxen's, uh, second was only to amend the agenda. There is not currently a motion on the table.
Well, that's fine. You can amend the agenda, which I believe you have done. So now it's up, now it's time to make a motion. Is that what you're saying, Clerk Kalenga?
Right. Beginning of this discussion, I apologize, uh, was just to provide clarification on what.
I do think our constituents want to hear more about this situation and about, so I do think it, I'm, I make a motion to have a discussion with a time limited, uh, with a time limit. Um, maybe of an introductory conversation and move the rest of the conversation to the next council meeting.
Second.
And did you want?
Second?
Sorry.
I can be more specific. I like to make a motion to have a discussion for no longer than thirty minutes on the prior, on the, uh, on the topic of hiring police officers.
Well, no, you can't do that. You can't change it in the middle because it was already second.
If it was second, it's really.
Yeah.
I'll take my second back. I, please clarify what you're talking about because I don't even know what date you're talking about.
Okay.
Are you taking that?
He took his second back.
Mr. Hilinga, would you, could you read his original emotion? I think I understood it. He moved to have an introductory.
You're muted, Andrew.
He moved to have an introductory time discussion with the, a full discussion at the next agenda.
I apologize. I was, I was on mute. The motion was to hold a discussion for a certain time. With, I'm sorry, hold a discussion with a time moment. It was seconded, that second was removed. So if.
The way he did, he, the part of his motion was that it would be an introductory discussion tonight and move the full discussion to the next meeting, next agenda. And that was what Mr. Wilcoxen seconded.
And, and that second was removed. So Councilmember Morgan, you may restate your motion.
I restate the motion. Uh, thank you so much. Um, I would like to make a motion to have a time discussion on the said topic of law enforcement for thirty minutes tonight and move the further agenda, move the further discussion to the next council meeting.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Mr. Hilinga, would you call the roll, please? Or do we, we can, we have a discussion? Yes, you can have discussion on the motion. Um, is there any discussion? Ms. Councilmember Somerville?
Um, I guess I, it's, I'm happy to have a discussion tonight. If others want to, um, I also have another motion that I'll offer after this motion. So.
Any other comments on the motion? Um, I'm in favor of discussion. But however, not a time of thirty minutes on to, on the, for discussion time tonight. That's just my comment. Any other que, uh, comments or questions?
Did, okay, I, I didn't have a, okay. Did you want it longer or shorter than that?
I want it shorter.
Okay, well, we can make that, okay, I can make it, well, okay. I said no longer than, it was said no longer than thirty minutes. That was the motion. It can be wrapped up. I mean, I, I think we owe it to citizens to, to speak on this.
Oh, I, I, I do believe we should have discussion. I just didn't want to add thirty minutes to tonight's meeting.
Well, again, it said no more than thirty minutes. So we, if we get concise and state our points, we could wrap it up much earlier than that.
Any other questions or comments on the motion? Okay, Mr. Hilinga, would you read the motion and call the roll, please?
Hold it a discussion for thirty minutes on said topic of the increase of police officers. Mayor Richardson?
Oh, gosh, I want discussion. Come back to me.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Come back to me as well, sorry.
Mr. Jones Chance?
No.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
No.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
No.
Motion carries with four yes and three no. Council, it is nine thirty now. Uh, discussion will end at ten o'clock.
Or sooner.
Or sooner, right?
But should we move to extend anyway? Because we still.
Yes, please do. Because we still have considerable, um.
Right. Uh, I move to extend our meeting until ten thirty.
Would you like to make that eleven o'clock so that we don't have to extend and extend again?
I move that we extend till eleven PM.
All right, thank you. Not that we have to stay here that long, but.
Support that.
All in favor?
I'm.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, uh, Councilmember Somerville?
Thanks. Um, maybe this will make the conversation go a little bit quicker, um, being that we can't have and we can't move forward with a resolution amending the budget until the next meeting. Um, my plan after this discussion would be to propose a motion to direct city staff to freeze the hiring process until we have the following council meeting to discuss the, um, the budget amendment. Andrew?
Uh, I would just like to let council know. I would just like to let council know that we would not be able to hold a public hearing next meeting. There wouldn't be enough time to notice properly.
Okay, um, so yeah, and it was, it was my, me and councilmember Will Coxon. That added it earlier so we can follow up to make sure it's on the first meeting. It would be the first meeting in August. Correct?
Seventeenth.
Okay. Well, that's, that's my plan. I don't know how much discussion we can really have tonight without actually publicly noticing the, the amendment to the budget. I think it's important for us to have the conversation with the community as a whole, which was something I brought up when we originally had this discussion. And I still think that whether people change their mind or not is besides the point, in my opinion. If the votes say this, you know, if council members stay the same on the issue as before, that, you know. I support your decision on that, but I do think that it is appropriate for us to open the discussion up to the community as a whole. Whether or not anyone else changes their mind. Some people who voted no might change their mind and say, yes, I don't really know, but I just, and maybe that'll be me. I don't know. I think it's appropriate to let the community have proper input.
Any other question, any other comments, discussion? Mister Will Coxon?
Yeah, I think this was an interesting discussion when this happened and that this was not brought up at all at the first reading of the ordinance. And it came in the last moment in the, in that discussion, on the second reading of the ordinance. That observation aside, you know, there's, you know, people have, have commented about COPAC, which I don't even think is, is actively meeting, but, but also YPAC hasn't. You know, there's been discussions there about what this looks like and, and whether this is effective. And, and, you know, in my professional life, if I go to bring on more staff, I have to write a justification for that. And, and I don't think that we've really seen that justification in terms of the efficacy of the, the, the program. And, and I would like to certainly see that. And what exactly that's going to do. And, you know, I, I respect my colleagues' votes on this previously, but I, I just don't think that, that process was, was clearly. Clearly execute, you know, the, the expectations I have for, for something of that magnitude would, would be more than just a quick vote between, between us. So. I, I would be in favor of extending that conversation into the joint meeting with the YPAC.
Any other questions or comments? Mister Morgan?
Yeah, I have a few comments. I have a few comments in this, and they probably going to be random, but I just feel like I need to say them because I know the discussion is going to continue. So I just wanted to say, first, I just want to thank every person or group represented that had very passionate comments. And various staunch sides to, on, on, on this issue. Some have want police officers and some just really don't. And I just want to speak to those who contacted me, those who reached out personally, and those who, um, would use whatever tactics they could to try to sway. And I do, like I say, I just want to say, there's so much limited information out here from the police, from council, from citizens. So there's still so much research to be done. Um, and I just want to say, we're mindful of those positions. But again, people keep making these statements like police don't stop crime, just like firefighters don't preemptively stop fires. They wait to, they smell smoke and hear the alarms and they go after them, just like EMS in the sense of they respond. And I know police respond and not always in the ways that people think they should. But this is my, 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 my lens. When you have high crime areas and, and high interaction with police, then you have places where there's not so much interaction with police. And it seems like, again, the people with less interactions and have more to say about what safety and security is for people who exist in those areas. And I think those people in those areas, even those, those positions are not all on the same side. It's a very, it's a variant of different emotions about how they respond to police. There's no right or wrong answer. I, I just don't like to feel like some of you, I'm talking to some of you specifically, you won't bully me specifically, I hope, you know, bullying my constituents, I mean, my colleagues to vote in your conscience. We're voting, I'm voting in my conscious based on the information presented me. And again, when it comes to safety and security, I think that's an independent feeling. And I know it's a national narrative around police and I know it's a local lens and we're hearing the police, we're hearing them. So we're hearing, as much as people say, don't vote for the police, and my only aversion to, to having three more officers is, I'm sure the pensions and the retirements in the back end of the hiring. But I don't, for one minute, take my vote back. I, I meant what I did and I just want to say that to all my constituents. I apologize if it's not your will, but I think there's so much more to see here. And, 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 and crime in the city and violence in the city is a historic thing, just like of the ways we deal with it. And I haven't heard for the record, any short term, midterm or long term solutions to anything. I've heard gripes, I've heard what we should have done right, and we're still, there's no perfect solution. And, and police, again, like I stated for the record, are not the catalyst to safety. They're a response team. Until we have a better response team, ready, loaded with a budget and agenda and personnel, this is what we going with. Or in my opinion, that could be better. So I just want to state that for the record, my opinion, my, as an individual councilperson's stance on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? From council? Mister Jones Chance?
Uh, yeah, well, so after that. Uh, second meeting, I think the first meeting after the vote was taken. You know, some people did reach out and folks from the neighborhood said that, and I'm talking about Ward One. In the Heritage Park neighborhood, reached out and told me that they supported what I'd done and that I'd done the right thing. We also, I think we all got. Communication from someone who had previously sent us a nasty email apologizing. And I thought that I'd begun to feel a way opening. And I had some further conversations and just, you know, the follow up from that. And I, I, I do, I do want to make a few statements. Just regarding the concerns about the addition of the three officers. And some of the tactics and lies that have been used by a few of the people in opposition. Firstly, I want to say that there's probably very little daylight between those views and mine. On policing. Currently, the officers in the department. It's, it's so short staffed that the lobby hasn't been open as it used to until recently. Needs have been unmet in the records department. And with sexual violence and other violent crime on the rise. Detectives were and still are wanting. And to help fill the gaps, overtime has been employed. And I'm one who doesn't believe the police should, police on patrol should carry weapons. So I'm sure that. All of you could probably agree that someone at the end of a sixteen hour shift should not have a firearm. I don't think that's unreasonable. So I think the use of overtime hopefully will be ameliorated a little bit by the addition of the three officers. And we're, you know, we're far from. You know, the, the height of when, of how many officers we've had in the past. So someone said by half, I don't know if it's by that much, but we have a reduced staff. And I think everyone has felt that and some people are feeling it more acutely. So. I think an issue, you know, is the safety and well being, this is for me, of the neighborhood in my ward, which until recently was the home of myself and five generations of my family. And I, I say that because accusations were made at the last meeting without the benefit of facts. That I don't have relationships there, when in fact. I have relationships would go back, which go back generations. A good percentage of the neighborhood is related to me either by blood or marriage. I care a lot about. The people there and I am concerned for their safety. There've been perhaps two, three, four, maybe, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, nights in the last two weeks where we have not received a special report regarding violent crime. I don't think anyone will say I'm, I'm, I'm not off by, by much if I'm off. So I want you to just please, please imagine living in that environment. Imagine being a teenage girl who's already afraid to leave the house to socialize. She, she, she won't leave the confines of her own home except for to go to an after school program. And witnessing the aftermath of what was thankfully a non fatal incident, including. A bloodied front stoop. That wasn't cleaned up until the next afternoon. Imagine asking your, your council members to do something and being ignored. As has been historically the case for this neighborhood. Imagine being shot standing at your kitchen sink. There's a very different experience to life. Being lived in this neighborhood. Like so many other times in this community, council appears willing to gamble with their lives. Reviewing this decision, I think, gives a small but more vocal. Minority and outsized role in the lives or deaths. Of people in this community. With a request for reconsideration. We know what will happen. Disenfranchised black people. And their two council members will be at the mercy of a majority, which is already living in more safety than the folks that we serve. It will demonstrate that in fact, their lives do not matter. It's a common tactic to disenfranchise. Uh, black people. By just saying, we'll put it to a vote. When we know that they don't come out. I'd also like to talk about some assumptions. It was stated with, again, without the benefit of fact, that I send my children to private school. And if it were just about me, I, I would leave it alone, but it's not. This is about something larger. After hundreds of years of racial struggle. If a black man or a black woman gets a small amount of privilege. He should not be shamed out of sharing it with his family. Same goes. For him not being ashamed out of having a business for the same reason. I say that because it reveals a racist trope which hypersexualizes black people. That's because the truth of the matter is, and it's racist assumption that surely a black man in his thirties must have children, is false. Because I, in fact, do not have children. None. Have never engaged in any activity which would result in children. And it perpetuates a harmful stereotype that hypersexualizes black people and leads to our dehumanization to the point that we can be murdered with impunity. And if you really want to get to the root of solving this issue. Then you would start with you. And, you know, it's, it's harmful and I, and I don't know where you got the information. I don't know whose children you stalked. But they certainly weren't mine. And. Now it seems we can't even get normal amount of safety that everyone else enjoys. We can't even get speed bumps and I, I do agree on that. You know, we, we finally have an issue, which brought Southside residents out to council. And it seems as though they'll be ignored again. I'm concerned about the misuses of communication with the residents instead of going to listen. A small group have taken it upon themselves to go and. White explain what the residents' issues are. It's a clear demonstration of white saviorism. Ignoring the needs of this community and leaving their solutions in the hands of a few who are willing to peddle racist tropes. Target black council members. And it certainly wasn't lost on me that one of them didn't add Mrs. Simmons into the mix until the second meeting. And even outright lie about where they live. Just to have their way, even if it kills us. You know, when black people call the police, there's a calculation that's made. As to how much benefit and how much risk will result. So when those people tell me. As they've told you now. What they need, please know that they have already made that calculation. It doesn't need to be re explained to them. You know, I'll close by saying that I will be very disappointed. If council refuses the desires of this neighborhood again. For those of you from the neighborhood on the call still hanging on. If this goes through, I will do everything. In my power to ensure that you are not ignored again.
Thank you, Mister Tewson. Any other comments or questions?
I'm Mister Jones Chance, though.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Please forgive me. I was looking at something that popped up on my screen. I'm sorry. Are there any other questions or comments? Please forgive me.
I think councilmember Somerville had her hand up.
Okay, councilmember Somerville?
Um, if there are any other comments, I'll just wait until we're done because I have another motion to make.
I think that mayor, if I could just say something really quick?
Yes, please do.
I think, you know, my, my thoughts is, I, I also have a different perspective and mine is actually being a police officer. And I know what it's like to run a minimum, minimum staffing and, you know, go from call to call and not have necessarily the time to be able to. And, you know, go from call to call and not have necessarily the time to be able to, do more than just get basic facts and kind of move on, and that never feels good. Um, and, and I want more for our, you know, police officers, I want more for our citizens. You know, right, mandatory overtime, uh, day after day after day after day, uh, serves no one. Doesn't serve the officers, it doesn't serve our citizens. They're not at their best, and when they're not at the best, their best, um, bad things happen. You know, and, um, I mean, I, I'm not gonna continue on, but I mean, I, I just think this is like a bare minimum thing here, you know? So, I mean, I'm gonna continue supporting this. Mayor Protem now has her hand up.
Okay, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I honestly, um, I don't really have much more to add, um, after Mr. Jones Chance or Councilmember Simmons, because I mean, it's really summed up the, the two sides of the coin for me. One, being a black woman who resides in this neighborhood and has for most of my life, as well as understanding the need for additional supports for our officers as they are the approach that we have in this moment. Um, I think that what I will add is that it's not lost, I think, on any of us, that there are other means and mechanisms that we want to employ to, to create change and create a better sense of safety and security and all the things that we're talking about, every person is talking about. But we know what is available, available to us now, and there is work that has to be done. And again, I think we said this in both meetings, that cannot happen overnight. But we can support what we, who we have now so that we don't have these issues with this mandatory overtime and, and have officers who are spread thin and, and having to potentially at some point make a very difficult decision. I just want to say to, um, my colleague, Mr. Jones Chance, I really, I appreciate the vulnerability and what you, what you've shared and how you expressed, um, your stance. And I, I highly respect you, um, for what you said tonight. You said it in a way that, um, you know, I probably wouldn't even have come at it as, as personal, um, as you did on tonight. So I just want to publicly share that I really appreciate what you had to say. Um, because it is, those are facts. The data points that folks are giving us or have, I appreciate, but these lived experiences are also facts. And so we have to take that into account. And, um, the last thing I will say is being, you know, I've been on council for seven years. And almost every year that I've been on council, I have advocated for some type of additional support for our police department, even when policing as a whole deviates from my personal view. But every year I've heard these voices, and I stood alone many times in asking, um, for these additional supports. And to finally have, um, colleagues who have suppo- who support as well and see the need, it is very disheartening to see, those coming against that, uh, knowing that this has been an ongoing issue and it's not going to go away, um, in, in the meantime. So, um, I guess I look forward to the continued conversation, but my position will also not change. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, um, are you unsettled, uh, Councilmember Somerville? Or did you have, I know you had said earlier you had something else you wanted to present.
Yeah, I just wanted to wait until everybody was finished with their comments. Um, I'd like to make a mo-
Okay.
You wanted to share?
Comments, but I, um, I too, Mr. Jones Chance, and I very quickly sent you a text acknowledging that, um, I was really quite proud of the statement that you made and appreciated. And I want to, you know, clarify, not that I don't believe that we need more police, uh, police officers. I think that we need to look at, and I would like for us to have an open community conversation around policing to see how we can improve our policing. And not to deny, I lived, uh, on the South Side, and I, for the first time ever in my life, I lived north, south of, uh, Harriet Street and have often heard many comments and, and, uh, had worked with people that lived here that had lots of complaints from the, um, the residents here. And definitely I hear the, the gunshots and, um, understand that and know the, um, the lawfulness that is in our area. I believe that we, uh, that a full community discussion on how we can really make things better. Because I don't necessarily believe that, I believe that we need the police. I'm not saying that we need to cut our police. I'm just saying I don't believe that just adding police is going to make a difference. I believe that we have to have the community involved and that the community is involved in such a way that the community is actually helping, helping and working with the police to help solve some of the problem. I know that there are people in the community that see and know that what is happening, and we need them to speak up, but they're not gonna do it when they feel at odds with the police. So there's some, we have got to bring the community and the police together. And I would like to really see us have a, a, uh, open community, uh, forum on policing. I do know that, uh, that we had, and I do recognize that when there was, when the, uh, Eastern Wasna County, I mean, uh, Safety Alliance was active, and I don't understand why it became unactive. But when it was active, we certainly had more policing in the area. And I do believe that during the time that it was active and the time that we had the cat, that the whole cat program added to our, also our, to our, uh, police force. Not that they were members of the Ypsilanti Police Department, but they certainly were being seen in the neighborhood and they were active here. I don't understand why our department withdrew from that, um, from that program. And I don't know, and I do believe that we need to reactivate the Eastern Wasna Safety Alliance. We know that there has been a cross-deputization with the E, EMU Police, with the sheriffs, and with the Ypsilanti depart- uh, Police Department, so that anyone hired by any of those, departments can operate wherever they are within the county. And it's not to say that I'm against having more police, but I do believe that the way that it was just presented without an opportunity for discussion, without an opportunity for, um, for us to look at it, that it was, uh, it was not, I don't, I did, I don't agree the way, with the way it was done. I do believe that there needs to be, uh, be discussion about it, and it might even be that through, after with the discussion, that we might even come up with other ways that we can increase our department and also increase the, the policing. I certainly agree that we do need police. I'm not saying in any shape, form, or fashion that we need to get rid of the police. When people get in trouble, who's the first people that they call? They, the call that they make, it is the police. So I do, uh, believe that we need a strong police department, but I also need, believe that we need a strong police department that is willing to work with the community and with the people in the community that can assist and give aid. And, um, I will stop at that. And, uh, Councilmember Somerville.
Mayor, if I'm, if I might, ju- just to be clear, uh, the department is not withdrawn from Eastern Wasna Safety Alliance. The police department is not withdrawn from the Wasna County Safety.
Oh, I didn't say that. I didn't say that. I just said that the Safety Alliance had become inactive, and I wasn't quite sure why it had become inactive.
So just to be clear, uh, the police departments are still working in cooperation with each other. In fact, we're just this week going through, uh, being re-sworn in, uh, because the time period has passed, uh, with the sheriff's office. So the police departments are still working interactively. The larger meetings that included entities like AATA and some of the other, um, township supervisors and whatnot, those have gone by the wayside, and I think largely is because Mr. Rutledge, uh, was the nexus for that, and since he left office, uh, no one kind of picked up the ball, so those larger meetings haven't been happening. But the police departments are still in full cooperation and working here.
Okay, thanks. I, um, well, in, in talking with other departments, I was told that, that was in, that, uh, ESOW was, uh, inactive. So I'm glad to hear that it's not, but, um, okay, thank you. We need to, we need to make it more visible and more vibrant again, so that people are seeing and knowing it, that it's there. Thank you for that.
I just want to be mindful of the thirty-minute time limit that we set.
Okay, thank you. All right. We will, our thirty minutes are for discussion are up, uh, Councilmember Somerville, very, very quickly, our time is gone. So can you do, you wanted to make a motion. Can you make it quickly, please?
Sure. I, it, no, it's, I don't, I don't have a motion to make.
Are you sure? You have ti- I'm giving you time to make that motion.
We can just move on to the next agenda, the next agenda item.
Okay. All right, um.
Council, the next, and, uh, item is a discussion regarding permit parking zones in the downtown districts.
Is there a, do we need a motion? I didn't hear, for some reason, you're coming across muffled to me tonight.
There's no need for a motion. It's a discussion regarding permanent parking.
Okay, um, is there, uh, someone to lead, someone to present?
I am here to present, uh, Mayor Richardson. This is Bonnie.
Oh, okay, I didn't see Bonnie. I'm on a different screen. Thank you.
I'm, I'm sneaky. Don't worry about it, and it's late. Um, so in the interest of brevity, just a, a quick overview of why I'm bringing this before you tonight. We brought before, uh, council a fee schedule update regarding, uh, parking generally and proposed keeping the downtown parking fees largely the same with an income-based waiver. The current status quo with the downtown permit parking is that employees are required to park, uh, with their permit in either the Washington Street Lot or the, the South Huron Lot, and those permit spaces sort of at the far outside of those lots and of the downtown area. Whereas residents for the same permit price are permitted to park anywhere in the North Adams Lot, anywhere in the North Huron Lot, or in those same, uh, permit-only spaces in South Huron and in North Washington. Over time, we've slowly been updating those restrictions by allowing employees or the same liberties as the residential permit, as there's effectively, due to the price and due to the way that the ordinance is structured. Uh, there isn't actually, uh, a logic behind having the two, paying the same price but being permitted to park very differently. So with, uh, the change in price for the residential permit from one hun- from three hundred to one hundred and fifty, uh, Mr. Barr pointed out that that might, uh, lead to some legal issues down the line because now effectively, if we had kept with the same schema of the employees being required to print it up, not print, I'm sorry, park at the outskirts, whereas residents being permitted to park, um, in the prime spaces, uh, would, we would be sort of continuing at inequity and, uh, that could be an issue for us. So in the memo, I, I presented a couple of different scenarios that could even that playing field a little bit, given the existing adopted fee schedule, where residents, uh, would be charged a hundred and fifty dollars for their downtown parking permit, and employees would be charged three hundred dollars for a parking permit. If there's a, a fourth scenario out there, I'm al- also happy to discuss that, but these three were sort of the ones that I was able to put together off of the top of my head. So in scenario one, we would establish some permit-only spaces, and, oh, let me actually back up a bit. One of the, uh, the ways that we were planning to remedy that discrepancy in the coming permit year, because permit years actually run September through August, would be to designate permit spaces in both the North Huron Lot and in the North Adams Lot. All permits would be then on a, a level playing field. If you were parked in a metered space or a time-limited space, you would be required to abide by those regulations. If you were in a permit space, you would have to have a permit. Um, and the intent would be to give enough permit spaces in these lots to create a balance of spaces available both for permit holders and for customers and other visitors. So that background given, um, in scenario one, we would continue with establishing some permit-only spaces in North Huron and North Adams Lot. We would allow residential permit holders to park only in designated permit spaces, but we would allow employee permit holders to park without restriction in either the permit spaces or in other spaces. So it's kind of similar to what we have now. Scenario two, we would establish some permit-only spaces in North Huron and North Adams. We would allow employees only in those permit spaces in North Adams and North Huron. And we would allow both employees and residents to park in the Washington Street Lot and South Huron permit, permit spaces. Uh, and in scenario three, uh, we would establish more permit-only spaces in North Huron and North Adams. We would create a premium residential permit class, uh, for that increased price. We would allow employee and the premium residential permit holders to park in any permanent designated space and allow regular permit holders to park only in Washington or South Hur- the South Huron permit spaces, which kind of mirrors the Washington lot-only permit, uh, that we currently have available for the discounted price of a hundred and fifty. And on the following pages, so pages two hundred and forty-one and, uh, following, there are, uh, both the current layouts, um, effectively drawn and crayon by myself, I'm sorry, uh, of the current layouts, followed by what some layouts might look like under scenarios one and two with the, the sort of a, a low-medium uh, level of permit-only spaces, and then, uh, followed by scenario three where we would have, uh, more permit-only spaces. And you'll notice there are some other changes proposed in these lots as well. Um, I've had a couple of surveys floating around downtown area to get, um, some idea of, um, what people's needs were. And these, the additional four-hour spaces, uh, were generally, um, pretty well-received. So I, I would love to hear your feedback.
And he quit, Mr. Brian, Jones Chance.
Uh, yeah, is there one scenario you think that sort of gives us the best mix of being able to minimize legal liability while also keeping the, uh, the lower parking rates for residents? It's like, was one of these better than the others?
All of them are a little bit awkward. Probably the best way to do that would be scenario three, but establishing ju- with, where we have the premium residential and then the regular residential, uh, permits. But with the lower number of permit spaces in the lot still.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Discussion?
I have a question slash comment for Bonnie. Okay, so we recently adopted a different fee schedule. We lowered the price for residential permits. We cut it in half for the year, making the, and made the increment payments smaller as well, um. And in the images in this packet, the current layout on Washington, so permit holders, sorry, I'm just trying to think through. so permit holders, sorry, I'm just trying to think through, um. So in like scenario three for Washington, in scenario three, would there be a place in Washington for the permit holders?
In Washington, as of this instant, um, it hasn't looked, based on the current volumes that I've seen in the lots, that we would need additional spaces, um, but we could add spaces, uh, in Washington to be additional permit-only spaces. That would be fairly easy.
Okay, but that's where people park right now?
Um, it is very difficult to tell where people really park, um, for permit holders because they park intermingled with, um, with the customers effectively. So the majority of residential permit holders choose to park in North Huron and North Adams.
Gotcha, I just, the Washington Lot is always empty when I'm near there during the day, so that's why I'm curious, what that would look like in scenario three, but I don't see it.
Right now, we would propose keeping it the same.
Okay, so permit holders would be able to still park in that back row?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then, okay, in permit or scenario three, there's sort of like a potential, I guess, premium option, and where would, like, do we know where the premium option, like, what, I guess, I'm just curious, like, would the premium, premium option be the former? Would, would the suggestion be the former fee?
Likely, yes. Um, we'd probably, um, sign the, the spaces in the North Huron and North Adams Lot as being for employees or for premium residential permit holders, or we would, might be able to come up with a different name because that's not a great one, but.
I guess, like, I'm somewhat interested in looking at like scenario three a bit more, but I guess if people are going to be paying like that, I guess, premium, to me, it would make more sense if they're going to pay three hundred dollars plus per year if they actually had like an assigned spot. Otherwise, they're just paying three hundred plus per year and then they might not have a parking spot. So I guess, like, I'm interested in that, if, if that means that they would be guaranteed a parking spot. I just.
One of the challenges with guaranteeing a parking spot is, uh, when we look at the budget for parking, I still don't have super perfect costs, but even the three hundred dollars doesn't cover our costs. So having an assigned parking space for someone that is theirs twenty-four-seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, potentially not being used sixty percent of the time when they're off at work or, or visiting friends or family or, or what have you, that would be space that could be otherwise utilized to generate income and revenue.
Okay, um, so, sorry, I feel, I'm, I, you know how I feel about parking permits, so, um, just, okay. No matter what, the fee schedule that we set with the, cutting the permit fee for downtown residents in half, they could park hypothetically in all three lots still. By paying that reduction, four lots, sorry. I'm trying to look at, bounce between all of them, um, on my screen. And then there would be, okay, I'm curious. Part of me is curious to see what happens this first year with those permits because we just reduced the price and hopefully can afford them now.
So in scenario three, the, the discount residential permit, um, would not have any spaces available to them in North Adams or North Huron. It would have spaces available to them in North Washington and in South, South Huron.
Okay, so like, that's, that's the catch then?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, Bonnie, let, help me know where North Washington Lot is.
So the North Washington Lot is, um, the bus lot, used to be the Goodwill Lot.
Okay, you call that North Washington, okay, all right. Uh, Mr. Morgan.
I just want to ask a question, uh, in, in all of those scenarios where we have permit holders, are the permits that are being sold in conjunction with how many spaces? So if there's a hundred and fifty spots for permit holders, are they going to sell a hundred and fifty permits?
Currently, there's not a relationship between the number of permits and the number of spaces.
Okay. Should there be? I mean, like, if we, we're not going to sell more permits than we have spaces, would we?
Uh, since the number of permits varies from year to year, it is, you can't do that the same way with a, a parking lot. We can't change really the number of spaces that are available year to year. Uh, what we try and do is have it be rationally related to the number of people who would be eligible for having permits. And one of the challenges is we don't have a good census of how many employees we have downtown, especially with all of the changes that have happened over the past year and a half. Um, so what I've done is I've looked at the number of dwelling units in downtown and sort of assigned, you know, dwelling units to a certain lot and, you know, how many dwelling units are in this lot or would have this lot as their primary location and try to figure out a number of spaces there that is reasonably related to both the number of units and the number of current permit subscribers we have. But we also know that the number of permits subscribers we currently have is imperfect, partially because not a lot of people actually realize we have a downtown residential permit program. But also because, uh, I mean, honestly, it's just not something we advertise. So that's something that we would, uh, be looking to change in the coming years as well. So we don't have good numbers, so it's hard to get the perfect ratio. And so what we do in this coming years is likely going to be changing the year after as we get better information and more information and feedback from parkers, both residential parkers, visiting parkers, be they customers, guests, clients, what have you, and, uh, employees and business owners, so.
Um, last question, can non-residents purchase via permit holders where you have to have a dwelling address here and see?
If they're employees, so if you work downtown, you can get a permit or your employer can purchase one on your behalf.
Thank you.
If I may go back to a question that council member Somerville asked, about having an assigned spot. So someone that has a parking permit who has been away all day or a couple of days and they come home for the evening, ready to park, and there's no parking spot, there, there is the odd chance that there could be no place for them to park. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
It is possible but unlikely. It is very possible that they would not have their favorite parking space available to them, like, in their, their lot or, you know, their row, because, you know, as we travel, we always have our spots in front of our houses or in our parking lots that, you know, we, we consider ours. But there would be a space available for them in one of these four lots. The number of spaces that we have, um, currently is greater than what we believe to be the number of permit holders that would be parked at any one given time.
So someone living or working and would normally park in South Washington Lot, uh, could, it's possible that they could come and not find a spot there and would need to park in the North Adams Lot, is that?
Yep.
What you're saying?
That's possible.
Hmm.
Or depending upon the duration of their visit, if they're just swinging home to pick up the mail and then off again to run errands, they could park in one of metered spaces or time-limited spaces, get that done and then go back on, on their errands, come back, maybe it's a less busy time, maybe their space is back open again. That's one of the benefits of having, um, actually, the, the way it works now is almost the worst of both worlds as far as it goes in North Adams and North Huron because of those residential parkers who can park there at any space indefinitely. Um, because these are metered and timed to create that turnover. But if residents are taking up twenty-five to fifty percent of the space, that makes it much less likely that guests, customers, people swinging by to pick something up really quick, uh, residents visiting other residents, all of the above, will actually be able to find a space overall because of these semi-permanent parking, uh, situations.
Okay, I think I'd be a little bit upset if I was paying three hundred dollars for parking permit and then having to, you know.
I've also had discussions with people, um, based on the surveys that I sent out where they would be very upset for paying three hundred dollars for a parking permit and not getting their space. So the space closest to their apartment, um, or flatly refusing to pay anything. So there's a, a wide variety of opinions, very strongly held opinions on every end of the spectrum.
I'm sure there are, yes. Okay, um, council member Simmons.
Yeah, I'll just say, I think parking is really tough and, you know, I, I, there's, there's like that tension, I guess, having assigned spaces, that's great, as long as no one else parks near space, right? Because after hours, you know, who are you really going to call for parking enforcement? And then just because, you know, you're not going to tow a car, highly unlikely that's going to be our, how we're going to handle that, right? They're going to get a ticket and you're still going to have to go look someplace, so kind of having more an open parking, right? Where, you know, you hope you can park close, but if not, you have to walk is, would probably make more sense in that respect, I think, just based on, um, you know, kind of the situation. But parking's tough and, you know, I think, I think in general, our city, we don't suffer what a lot of other cities do. Um, you know, I think, you know, like said, Ann Arbor, it's pretty tight and pretty expensive, uh, to park there. I mean, anyone who works, uh, at the University of Michigan understands, you know, what that's like, uh, or if you live down there, uh, downtown or, you know, in the outlying area. And so, uh, you know, people pay a lot of money and the joke there is that it's just a license to hunt for a spot, but doesn't guarantee one because it is hard to do, right? Um, but anyway, I don't know, it's a tough topic and, you know, I don't know, I mean, I saw the three scenarios that, uh, Ms. Westler, um, uh, you know, presented and I don't really personally have strong feelings necessarily, um, I, about either of them, but, um, I think we'll, we're never going to make everybody happy when it comes to parking and a lot of other things too, but.
Any other questions or comments, discussion? Okay, seeing none.
Council, the next item on the agenda is.
Thank you, Ms. Westler, appreciate all the work you've done on parking. And as, uh, council member Simmons said, it's not an easy, and others have said, it's not an easy uh, thing to work on, work on or work with, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Look, Kalanga.
Council, the next item on the agenda is board and commission nominations. There's one nomination to the Police Advisory Commission, um, Precious Turman. Has to be a new appointment, uh, expiring February of twenty twenty-four. Uh, the next item on the agenda are Boarding Commission reports, the first commission is Police Advisory.
Thank you. Uh, we just got, we have to do something about this order, boards and commissions versus liaison. I'm a liaison to that commission, so.
That's, that's what this is, boarding commission.
Okay, cool. Um, well, the last meeting was July twenty-second, no, um, the next meeting is, is July twenty-second. Um, no, the next meeting is August twenty-sixth, um. Uh, I didn't make it to the last meeting, but I have read, read over the notes and it was a standard meeting where they did a lot of goal-setting, um, and set agendas and bylaws for the, um, for the year. And, um, and they created an agenda for the joint meeting with us coming up, um. And it's monthly, this is by the police department, by, um, Chief DeJusty and, um, the next meeting is, uh, I think our joint meeting is, is, is the next meeting coming up, I believe that is August twenty-sixth.
There should be a July meeting.
Oh, July twenty-second. Yeah, July twenty-second is the next meeting, I believe our joint meeting is, uh, August twenty-sixth. Thank you.
Council, the next, uh, um, commission is Human Relations.
Um, yeah, I was unable to attend the meeting, um, it was last week, but it was very short as they lost quorum, I believe, early into the meeting. So, um, they'll reconvene next month and I'll report out on that.
Next me, uh, next commission is Arts Commission.
Council member Somerville, okay, there she is.
Sorry, I was trying to eat dinner.
That's okay.
I do not have an update and the meeting this month is canceled, so I think between now and our next council meeting, there won't be a meeting, but I will keep everyone informed. When I have new information to share.
Thank you.
Next, uh, commission is Parks and Rec.
Uh, that is me, there's a meeting later in the week, uh, for Parks and Rec. Sustainability is, uh, taking the month of July off and the next meeting will be in, in August.
Okay, since it appears you covered sustainability, the next is HTC.
Sorry, zoning out, uh, I, actually, I don't have anything to report, sorry.
Uh, next, uh, is Planning Commission. I believe it was Mr. Jones' chance.
Uh, yeah, the last, um, meeting we already took care of, which was, I believe, the adoption of the Non-Motorized Plan. And then, uh, for Zoning Board of Appeals, there's not a meeting until the twenty-eighth, if, if there is one.
Hey, council, moving on with the agenda is Liaison Reports, first being SEMCO.
Uh, no report at this time.
Next is Watts.
Uh, nothing to report right now.
Next is Urban County.
Uh, yes, um, the, uh, Urban County met last, um, last Wednesday and, um, it's good to report that sixty percent of the county is vaccinated according to, uh, Director Lovelock. And, uh, out of OCD, the weatherization program has been extended to cover multiple dwelling buildings. It had been that it only covered, um, single-family homes, but they have extended it to multi-dwelling, uh, and they are doing, uh, roof replacements for multi-dwellings that, and that is for two to four units, um, and then it was also added that, or five and up. So, um, and let's see, there is, um, the HAWK program is offering rental assistance and, uh, CERA, C E R A, C E R A, is offering help with, um, evictions. That was basically the, um, the report from Urban County.
Next is Expendee Downtown Development Committee.
Hey, good evening, everyone, we do not have a meeting in July. Uh, we do have a movie coming up here, not this Thursday, but next Thursday at Frog Island. We're going to be watching The League of, uh, A League of Their Own.
Uh, next is Friends of Rutherford Pool.
Um, so the pool is up and running, the programs are all, uh, um, taking place, um, the, with the relaxation of the requirements they, they met for COVID. They met to reassess whether the, the lower occupancy, um, Uh they met to reassess whether the, the lower occupancy uh could be expanded. And they did increase that uh up to a hundred fifty people in the pool. Um that has been. Uh with that lower capacity, I mean, it, it's not at full capacity, but it's higher than they had said uh early in the year. Um that has been met on uh a couple of different occasions with the, the holiday weekend things. And it seems to be all right. Um people are still being asked to wear masks in the building. And then uh, what else is going on? As Dave said, the, the solar is almost completely installed. There's still some work to do. There was some discussion about uh whether the pool was eligible for some of the ARC. Uh money since the, the, the revenues lost, the city calculated loss revenues based on. Uh information from the pool as well, and so um I'll be in discussion with the, the board and, and city manager about. Uh how that would be arranged and what that would look like, so. That's it.
Counsel, the next item on the agenda is council proposed business.
Uh Mister, Mister Jones' chance, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, since you mentioned uh Sarah and um, you know, the, it's an unfortunate um Supreme Court decision regarding the CDC's eviction moratorium. Um so I would say if you are having trouble, Sarah, um will eventually make payments, but. Um I would say if you're, if you feel like you're facing eviction, contact COC. Um or you can apply online for Sarah directly, um communicate with your landlord and from what I am seeing the, the. As long as you have applied, even if your landlord has not applied, the judges will not order an eviction. So even if you have an eviction notice. Um, you know, apply to Sarah, get with Doc, um and, and stay in your home. I decided I'd mention that since you, you mentioned it, I happen to be dealing with a, a client this week, so.
All right, thank you. So even though um, the ruling, they still should apply to Sarah.
It will not hurt. The funds are there.
Okay. And could you talk a little, what was the ruling exactly?
Um, they, I think they held that the uh CDC did not have authority to um put a moratorium on evictions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um well, I was calling on you for um council proposed business, but thank you for that report. Do you have any council proposed business?
No, that'll count for that.
You're gonna let that be your council proposed business? Is that what you're saying? Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Will Coxon.
Um, just wanted to thank city staff, uh there's a couple of things, thanks city staff and, and you mayor for. Uh previous conversations about flooding in the area, um and all the work that was put into uh answering people's questions and getting them. Talented so that they can be in line for. Uh inspections from the county, which have been happening and, and also with FEMA, I, I run into a couple uh county inspectors in the neighborhood and they. They seem to be working through that, that, that log that was recorded from, from uh. All the efforts to get people to log in and, and um report that. Along with that, uh one thing I have for, for uh Department DPS around Acres is that I also. Uh got a call from um our good friend on, on Grant Street. And uh the alley that has posed problems in the winter is posing problems for her basement now with the, the rains. Um and so she has some proposals and I will uh contact you tomorrow uh by phone to discuss that.
Okay, thank you. Uh council member Somerville.
Thanks, um. First, um, I just wanted to highlight that. Um, Mr. Acres responded pretty quickly when I emailed him about some issues with um garbage cans at our parks. Um, it's obviously been an issue since last summer with the pandemic and people ordering takeout. Um, so I'm just starting to think about ways. In which we can encourage people to kind of take trash with them when they leave um. In some of our parks, at least in, in my ward, um in particular, I know Councilmember Morgan. Um was recently at the pavilion at Prospect Park and um, there's just lots of garbage left, so I'm just trying to think of ways to. Encourage people if, if the garbage bins are full on Sunday because staff, you know, aren't in to empty them on Sundays. Maybe people will take them with them and think more about some of the waste. Um apparently, my cat is interested in talking right now. And secondly, um, that's obviously a longer issue. He's very big. This is Max, um. It's obviously an issue too with some of the stuff that we're doing at our parks, like the music in the park and stuff, so just trying to think of ways to mitigate some of that. Um, so I appreciate all that staff is doing kind of on the fly to fix some of those concerns, and I know that it's been a long. Term thing that DPS has been working on getting more um garbage cans available to folks um at our parks. Secondly, um, I just wanted to kind of follow up. I know we ran out of time during the discussion, just to. Um, thank everybody for participating in the discussion on the agenda item regarding three police officers. Um, I think most importantly, I hope everybody on council knows that I respect all of you a lot and I do. Um, just wanna say that I, I appreciate hearing your concerns and I do respect your lived experience. Um, being on the south side and being members of council and being black and feeling and, and being targeted for those reasons. Um, I do think that democracy and government works better when people are involved and informed and. That was my reasoning for bringing this back up and it's still the reason. Um, and I, I, I totally, I said this earlier, but I do totally know that there's a chance that the outcome. Wouldn't have or won't change, um but that doesn't change my like need for um more public participation. I don't think that's ever, you know, there's never enough of that because we can try all the ways to get people involved in government and we're still gonna miss people. Uh I just think it's really important and that's like just part of my core belief system that we should be constantly trying to get more engagement, especially around. Issues like this, but I do just wanna, you know, highlight that your lived experience does matter. Um, at like one hundred percent, I just also feel that as I'm. Being a member of this board and being elected to represent Ward Three, that I have to also speak up on behalf of the people who weren't present for that meeting because they didn't know about it or. Maybe still don't know about it. Um, so I just wanted to say that. Um, and I also think it's important for us to consider. People who don't have places to live that are residents of this city and people who have substance use disorders. There are. There are things that we can improve in those areas with respect to the way that policing is done and those are some of the conversations that I hope we get to have. When we do have our joint meeting with the um, the commission, but I just wanted to. Say thank you for participating in the conversation. Um, whether or not the decision gets reversed isn't the most important thing to me. The most important thing to me. Is that more people participate in the conversation and have time to air their um support or not support for that. And that's what I have.
All right, thank you. And about the garbage cans, I, that was one of, gonna be one of my issues, but since you brought it up, I'll, I'm gonna add it. Here is that I did uh, in the meeting with um city manager and the clerk, I did. Um, bring up the subject of possibly having um someone work. Uh in DPS, work overtime for maybe a, an hour or two. On Saturday morning and Sunday mornings to empty the, the cans because they are, I've noticed how full. That they get. I was at Recreation Park and also at Park Ridge Park and, and seeing it. Uh, and I don't know that we can put out, if we have more cans, maybe that would solve the issue, but still. It would be over full and overflowing from um Friday night into Saturday and Saturday into Sunday. So people, new people coming to use the parks would still be faced with uh garbage cans full. So if it's possible, uh I would like to see uh if we could maybe have. Uh one or two persons and Mr. Acres could rotate that overtime uh hours. To uh throughout the department, so if that's possible and I'm asking now again if that would be, be looked at. Because it's not just uh one park, but it's probably all of our parks, as you said, Prospect and Re- I know Recreation and. Uh haven't heard anyone talk about uh Riverside, but I'm sure that that is there too. Also, uh council member Somerville, you mentioned music from the parks, so what parks are you? Talking about and mentioning?
The noise complaints or the extra garbage from the music? I, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is because we're ha- we're amping up activity in the parks, like Jazz Festival. For example, I got images of trash all over and overflowing from the garbage cans and that was what prompted me to email Mr. Acres and he was like, we're gonna get more trash cans. Um, but it happens, it's, it's regularly happening in both Frog Island, Riverside, the trash cans in Depot Town. Prospect, I just, and I don't know, I don't frequent some of the other parks. Can you hear me?
I was asking about the music though. You mentioned that there being, but you were relating the music to the garbage cans.
I guess for, for like the, the foot traffic and just the people being at the park, but it was like, yeah, sorry. I wasn't sure what you were talking about.
No, I thought you were, I thought you were mentioning that you got more complaints about music and so I was asking where that.
I was getting complaints, yeah, well, I mean, I have been getting some complaints still from the same residents. But I don't really think there's anything I can do about it. I've tried everything, so. Um, but in terms of the trash, I think it just is in direct correlation with the events happening. And more people are ordering takeout and going down to the park and eating and then they need a place to throw their trash away, so. Um, it's at all the parks, at least in my ward.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, I misunderstood, okay. Uh, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Mayor. I got two things. Uh one, I just wanna say thank you to the um, to the good folks who created the Jazz series. Um. Seem like that's a lot. People were talking about it and it just really um put a bright light in our city, so for all those who organize it, Mr. Lawrence and everyone. Uh associated with that, thank you for bringing that um to our uh city. Um, secondly, uh coming up on the next agenda, um. It's gonna be a nomination, uh I wanna support for Erica Vanier for the uh Planning Commission. Uh, and I have no further business, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I believe the, the clerk will talk with you or speak with you about um. That nomination. Uh it seems that Miss, um, is her last name Vanier? Seems as though she does not live in the city.
Well, that's cool. There's a part with, in about a resident, non-residents being under commission and needs a two-thirty vote and we'll cross that bridge when we get there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, and my only concern with that is that we have. Often we have uh any number of people that live outside the city that want, that apply and are, are nominated. And I just, you know, there's that whole issue of we do it for one, we have to do it for all, but we've talked about that when she, when that. When it comes up on the agenda. Okay, thank you. Okay, uh commissioner, I mean, co- council member Simmons.
Um, yeah, so I mean, obviously, one of the big things is that we had this uh, you know, major flood incident in uh. Uh it sounds like really just parts of Ward Two. I, I didn't hear back that it really affected any other areas and I think. Um, you know, uh that's in large part that we are kind of the low part, um you know, we're in the hilly section and then. There's these low parts and also has to do, I think, things like the way the drains flow, the storm drains and whatnot. We're kind of the end of the line. Before it gets to the river uh for the storm drains and um. So, you know, it's concerning, I mean, um these rain events, you know, are becoming more and more regular, you know, these big events. Um, and they're having a impact and so, um you know, like a number of things that we need to consider and, and. Um, think about is, you know, how do we um, you know, kind of respond to what might be, you know, more of the regular in the future and so. You know, in talking with different uh people at YCUA and the Drain Commission and things like that, I mean. You know, they say, hey, our, our stuff was functioning, you know, normally, there wasn't a failure with, you know, this or that and, and I get that, but the fact is. What, what it is to me now, it seems, you know, inadequate for what the current, you know, circumstances are. Um, you know, with either a climate and or population or whatnot, and so um these events will keep happening. Um, I mean, my house was impacted, but because I had a previous uh sewer flood that uh. Due to a failure, you know, I, I installed at great expense a check valve, a backflow um valve, basically that shuts off like the water from the sewer. So the flooding I got happened to be from just floodwater, but still, that was uh, you know, oh, probably a foot of water or something. My neighbors adjacent to me, basically their uh whole basements filled up. Um, my next door neighbor had six feet of water, the neighbor next to them, six feet of water. Then four feet, then three feet. It kind of went from there and there's a lot of other homes like that. So it's just something I, I'm bringing this up. Um, people were devastated by this. Insurance will likely not cover. Um, much or anything, um and you know, cleanup for that is, um can cost a couple thousand dollars and. Um, you know, a lot of my neighbors are elderly, on fixed incomes and um, you know, my next door neighbor, I mean, I think that. Couple neighbors down, all of the next, you know, adjacent neighbors, they have to replace uh furnaces, you know, appliances, everything. Um, and forget about just the contents, you know, so it, it's, it was, it's devastating. And, and again, I, there's a lot of people who, who've suffered that, you know, or something similar, uh or maybe to a lesser extent, but still, it was a lot, so. You know, this is something I wanna, I guess, you know, us to, does not forget about, um just because it didn't happen elsewhere in the city. Um, you know, I, I don't know if ever, I know the mayor and I appreciate you, um mayor, coming around um and talking with people. And um, you know, they appreciated that as well and again, I don't know if anyone else drove around. I've got plenty of pictures, myself and Steve, you, you know, wanna have an understanding of. Kind of what it looked like and how devastating it was for a lot of people. Um, and you know, I, you know, the question about flood insurance and, you know, are we in a flood plain, things like that, well. Flood planes have to do with river flooding, right? So that's about in relation to the river. Well, we're, we're uphill enough, you know, that we're not in that flood plain. And so we're never gonna be able to get that insurance and even my neighbors who have. Uh, you know, kind of some writers on their insurance about sewer water damage and things like that. Are struggling to get, get things covered because, well, there was some rain, what, you know, so it's, it's not, there's no easy answer and even that's very limited. Um, for, you know, what the average homeowner seems to have, but I haven't spoken to anyone who's said, yeah, insurance is covering and I'm all good. Um, pretty much it's like, we don't know and probably not, and so, um you know, I know from my own experience, my insurance is cop- covering nothing. Um, for, you know, what it costs for me to, for cleanup and replace my, you know, washer dryer and things like that, so. Um, but the other issue is, it's, you know, to me, the issue is not about, you know, like the flood insurance or flood plain, things like that. I mean, to me, it's really about like. Um, it's kind of like, some of these areas aren't in like a, not a flood plain, they're in like a drain plane, you know, like the uh, either the sewer drain plane or a. Um, uh, you know, the stormwater drain plane because it comes from all the rest of the city. And then by the time it gets to a lot of these areas, the drains are already full and so they've got no place to go, but into the streets and into the homes. And so, you know, to me, you know, maybe, maybe what we have in certain parts aren't adequate. And so these are questions I wanna ask and talk more with uh the Drain Commissioner for the county and um I know. Um, you know, I think, you know, Steve, I, um, the Sustainability Commission, I think there's some members on there who have some ideas. Um, about, you know, how to be resilient and, and kind of approach this, but this is something that we have to probably. Address and deal with and I don't know what that's gonna take or, or not, but um, you know, it, it's important and it really does matter. Um, and again, it was devastating and if anybody wants me to take them around and talk to people or see pictures or whatever, I am so happy to do that and you can talk with people. Um, and we had cars submerged, you know, it was up to my knees in my front porch, in my front yard, um, it was bad. So anyway, I'm not gonna belabor that, but I think it's a conversation that we need to think about and something that we need to maybe do, future planning. I don't. future planning. I don't know what that means or what it looks like, but it's not going to go away. And, you know, people are upset. I do want to say thank you again to the mayor, to Steve, Francis and staff. Thank you so much for being responsive. And it it was so appreciated that we suspended the trash limit. So thanks for making that happen. Because you wouldn't imagine, you couldn't even believe it was the contents of people's whole basements down there out, you know, and it took, you know, two weeks to get that. And I I drove by when one of the guys was out there collecting the trash and I said, hey, I want to, you know, say thank you so much. You know, we really appreciate that you're doing this extra collection for us and whatever. And, you know, I said, be sure, tell your boss, you know, thank you. And his answer was just like, man, we're just doing our job, you know, it was like, you know, for them, it like wasn't a big deal, but to to everybody else, to all of us, it really was. And people have been really impressed actually with Stevens for trash collection. So anyway, that was huge. So I just want to say thanks to that. And also, you know, obviously not doing ordinance enforcement because people had stuff out there. So I don't know. So I won't belabor that. It's really late, but it was a big deal. And like I said, if ever anybody doubts that, like, I'm happy to take you around, show you pictures and, you know, you can understand a little bit about what what people experience because it's been devastating, like absolutely devastating, like tens of thousands of dollars. People's livelihood there. Just like, yeah, there's just a lot. So the other thing I was just going to mention, someone brought it to my attention that maybe our website's not up to date with trash collection. There was some confusion about dates and whatnot with like the holiday, the past Fourth of July holiday. So if we could just double check that, you know, that would be helpful to make sure that's got the most up to date information with like the current dates. And then I have one other question. Some neighbors were asking, and Steve, I don't know, I'm kind of shut out on my email right now, so I haven't seen if it's been on email, but there was some talk about some things happening at the border to border trail on, you know, the backside of of College Heights neighborhood. And it looks like they're using those horrible machines that just go through and just like trash, you know, just they just come through and just rip down whatever the heck's in the way, which I think looks horrible when they do it on the road sides and just seems more destructive than than whatever. But there was a comment made about some, they're getting ready for property and someone made, someone's under the impression maybe we're, we bought property back there, which I'm, I think that's not the case. I think they're confusing something. Did you address that, Steve, or?
I did, and.
Okay, thanks.
It it came up during a master plan meeting and the and the person was mistaken and I pointed that out.
Okay, so you know, I, okay, I see that. I didn't track that. So all right, thanks. I just wanted to get them an answer about that. So thanks for for taking care of that. So I don't know, other than that, I think I'm done. I just, again, want to really show my sincere appreciation for, you know, the care and concern, I mean, Ron Acres and, you know, then City Manager and Mayor, you know, for for you know, showing showing your care and concern and doing what you could to, you know, kind of help people. Like I said, it was greatly appreciated. And also Bonnie, you know, with the form and, you know, getting that stuff, all that information, because it gives people kind of a sense of hope and that we're doing something and trying and again, getting the flyers done and everybody who's involved with that. So so we could get the information. I I spoke to FEMA the other day. They are out here. And even they had to say like, this is not, these aren't hundred year floods, you know, someone told us when we had a meeting with the county, you know, these things are, you know, every couple of year floods. And so this is just going to be kind of more of what we experience. So but anyway, thanks, thanks so much. Like I said, I sincerely appreciate it. And so do the folks in in Ward Two who are impacted. So.
Is FEMA actually? Well, I won't say actually, but are they actually actually being of assistance and helping the people that were were that had damage?
Yeah, so right now what they're doing, I mean, they keep, they have to come to my house just as a resident, right? And so I told him, hey, you know, I'm in City Council and thank them for coming and kind of spoke with them. So there was a representative for Dingle's office, there was someone from the county. And there's two folks from the state police, kind of like emergency management. And then, you know, I think there's one or two people from FEMA. So right now what they're doing is gathering information that's my, because I was wondering too, like, so what's going on where you're at, you know? So right now they're kind of assessing, gathering information, talking with people. And so, you know, after that point, I don't know. So those would be my questions too, like what happens next and when does that kind of happen? You know, because like I said, this is going to take a long time for people to get their lives a bit back together. You know, it's one thing to kind of clean the stuff out, which, you know, some people are still dealing with because there was such a backlog with the help. But getting new furnaces, getting new, you know, and and so again, all of my neighbors up the street here are elderly, again, you know, fixed incomes. Nobody's, you know, that's that's not something they were, you know, prepared for or, you know, or whatever you want to say, but expecting, you know, to have to replace all their mechanicals in their basement. So anyway, so yeah, those are some of my questions too, but I haven't heard yet. So I look forward to learning more as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
An extension, please.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay. We've got four minutes.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the move, the 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 meeting to eleven fifteen.
Support.
Thank you.
It's been moved to second till eleven fifteen. All in favor?
I. Really quickly, I just wanted to add that the governor did like officially reach out to to get a presidential disaster declaration. So that's kind of like the next step to answer your question about FEMA.
Yeah, and I know that stuff's moving today.
Yeah.
Yeah, that that stuff's moving along and it's it's like, I said, appreciated and you know. Yeah. So so again, I appreciate everyone's efforts and like I said, Representative Dingle's office has been really accessible and active. And so people appreciate that. So yeah, but thanks for that update and I appreciate it. So I think that's all I have today.
Yeah, I was going to share that letter. I will, I got it just before the meeting started. I will forward it to to all the council members so that you can see it. So thanks, though, Councilmember Somerville for sharing that. But I will send forward it to all. Okay. Mr. Morgan, did you move on the screen or have you given your council proposed business yet? Are you there?
Mayor, I've already given, I've already given my proposal business. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. You moved on my screen and I'm following my, I'm following my screen. Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Brown.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight? Okay. Thank you. I do, I guess that that's everyone and it comes to me. Okay, one of the things that we we didn't respond to tonight, Mr. Lawrence put forth a request for a partnership or assistance from the from council and we got it, the meeting moved so that we did not address that. Mr. Barr, can we pick, take that up during this time or do we need to put that off till next week?
You could take it up now or next week. I'd recommend setting it up for next week.
I, thank you. That was going to be what I thought too. Okay. All right. So we will address the request from Mr. Lawrence regarding the partnership or assistance from the city on the next next meeting. And due to time, I will save the items that I have for our next meeting also. I do like to say, and I will send that I received an invitation to a treasury meeting on tomorrow at noon. And I will be coming to, it was a, you had to register and they would only take one registration per municipality. So I did register for that. So anyone that would like to sit in on that meeting and is talking about the ARP funds and the state and local S L F R E F funds. So if anyone would like to join me in chambers tomorrow at 12 o'clock, we can watch it together. I offered to, I asked specifically if we could have others sign in and was told, no, it was only one sign in per municipality. So it will be, I will be there at, and I understand that it's supposed to be somewhat of a relatively short meeting. They said the treasury moves very quickly in their meetings. So Mr. Wilcox, and I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I'd like to be there. I'll be there.
Oh, okay, come. Yes, I'll be in chamber. And if Mr. Halinga, if you could set us up a computer that we can join the meeting on on Zoom. Okay, I appreciate that. Okay. And I did get, I did did get word and I that, and I don't know if they're going to reiterate it tomorrow, but I did get word from the Congresswoman's office that we we have to, that the AARP money requires, it requires community input. So we do need to start looking at how we're going to host some meetings that we can get our residents involved. It is a requirement for the money. And one good thing about it, we don't have to spend all the money right now. It doesn't have to be spent by tomorrow or next week. So, which is a good thing because often there is a real short deadline on spending government money. I was in a meeting today with several other municipalities and I did ask them to share. They, two or three of them have already laid out some plans. They're not totally completely settled, but how they did it and how they did it with their community input. So they will be sending those to me and I will be willing to share them with council and with staff. I have some other things, but I will stop there due to time. So, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is communications from the City Manager.
I did have a memo in the council package. Sorry, my granddaughter, she woke up. And I'd just like you to look at that and direct any questions to me that you may have, but it's an update regarding the goals and where we are thus far. So in the interest of time, I will conclude my comments at that.
Thank you very much, City Manager.
Council, the next agenda is communications. The August twenty sixth Joint Council and Police Advisory Commission meeting is listed. I also included a letter from the Michigan Municipal regarding the annual meeting notice. And I just wanted to let council know that they should be thinking about who they would like to elect as council delegate and alternate, which will be on the next council agenda.
Hey, thank you.
And then we are to adjourn.
And this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for participating. And everyone have a good night and see you next week.